Michelle, you're in the middle of the tape now.
No problem.
Michelle, I'm going to send you a slideshow.
A slideshow?
I'm going to send you a slideshow. We put together the middle school data. So, I'll send that right now in case you want to look because all the questions that people have been asking, we put onto a slideshow.
Okay. Great. Thank you. If I'm able to, data that Tom just sent us on the comparison sheet.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The data that Tom just sent us on a spreadsheet over email.
Yes.
Did you get it?
Where was that data collected from? Was projected? Was that from MedJet numbers?
We use our October 1st report.
No, they're projected.
Okay.
Yeah, it was the October 1st of the previous year.
But they're projected based on the October 1st report.
About two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know. You might like, I'll share this one with you that I did because I took it and did the differences.
Yeah, we were specifically trying to look for middle school, actual versus reality.
What's that all about?
Projected versus actual?
Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, so Karen's.
Oh, sorry, dish.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this evening, Wednesday, February the 10th. This is the public forum for the budget hearing. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, is being aired live, and is also livestreamed at longmeadow.org. This meeting was also posted as required by open meeting law, and if we can begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. I know we do have correspondence for this meeting, Kim?
We have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center dated February 2nd regarding the Student of the Month awards for January 2016. A Long Meadow student recognized is Ashley Matthews in Integrated Occupational Prep. We also got some emails from people about their thoughts on...
They're on tomorrow night.
They're on tomorrow nights, okay.
They'll be recorded. You've already received them, but they'll be recorded tomorrow.
Okay. We have read them.
And I would just like to apologize to any of our music families, our students. In having to change this meeting to this evening, our original snow date was last evening when a special speaker was scheduled. And so, in trying to make sure that the school committee had a quorum and that we could meet the deadlines required by the town and the meetings, you know, and it was in no way meant to slight the music program or any of its participants. It was just a decision that had to be made and it was, you know, a difficult one to have to do. So, I would just like to, you know, apologize for that. I hope those who attended the program last night enjoyed the speaker and, you know, good luck at the concert this evening. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job. And with that, I'm assuming that all of our visitor comments have to do with the budget and the budget hearing. Are there any that do not relate to the budget hearing? Because I'd like to start with our students who do have to go and perform, and if there are any parents of students who are in the concert, I would like to give them first chance to speak so that they can then go to the concert this evening. So, I'll go ahead and start with you if you'll just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Nicolea Keltchat. I'm from the Long Meadow High School Orchestra. I just came so I could give everyone a brief overview of why I think keeping 4th grade music is important. So, I started orchestra, I play the violin in the 4th grade, and I still play now and I'm a junior in high school. And I think it's really important to establish a love for music at such a young age. I think it's important to get it into your schedule. Everyone in Long Meadow has a very busy schedule. A lot of people do athletics, a lot of people do orchestra and bands, and it's, everything is a very big time commitment. If you start at a young age, you're able to establish what's really important to you. I had, in high school orchestra, you play complicated music, the repertoire is difficult, and you have to make time for it. You have to make an hour. Sometimes people practice more than that every single day. And if you don't start in 4th grade, you won't make time for it. You won't grow as a musician. And music has just been a really important part of me in a high school orchestra and me in the high school programs because everyone... Everyone takes a lot of time for everything that they do in high school. And I chose orchestra as my main focus, and a lot of people in the orchestra will tell you that this is what they do. This is what they spend time doing every single day. We go places, we, everyone is, it's a such tight-knit community. Everyone just has a really good time, and it's just important to start at such a young age with the complicated music we play. We're one of the best orchestras around, and it's just, it's really important to start at a young age. And that's all I really have to say, but thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Of course.
Sam, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to anything regarding the budget before you would have to leave as well.
Yeah, sure. I, you know, I'd just like to echo everything that Nicolea said. I myself started actually in the 4th grade and 5th grade programs and, you know, I, it's, it's more than crucial because that's, you know, that's when my curiosity was triggered towards music and that's where I found my love for music and I've been playing ever since. And it's been such an important part of my life and I would have never really recognized it if, you know, maybe that program wasn't there. And, you know, I, music, I feel like is one of the things that separates Long Meadow from other districts. And, you know, everyone talks about how great the high school music program is, but if you really take a look at what makes a high school program so great, it's not necessarily, well, it is what happens here, but you have to look back a couple of years and you have to realize that we don't all come to this high school as, you know, great musicians proficient at an instrument or any musical, anything musical related. It's the work that we do in 4th and 5th grade and at the middle schools. And so, I just like to, you know, echo what Nicolea said that, you know, without that foundation, you know, Long Meadow music wouldn't be what it is. And other than that, you know, there's, there's been a lot of research and science behind, you know, how music at a young age, a 4th grader and 5th grader, you know, extends beyond just music itself. It, you know, it helps in several other facets, in brain development and so many different things. And, you know, I can't stress enough how crucial those programs have been to me and I can't stress enough how crucial it is and, you know, it's definitely changed my life. I plan to pursue music in college and I look back and, you know, it starts in the walls of Center School in 4th grade. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both. Are there any parents who need to speak, who are needing to attend the concert? All right. If you'll come up and...
I prepared something. That's all I need.
We won't bite, I promise, if you'll just tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Jerika Lee and I'm a senior at Long Meadow High School. I'm speaking today in defense of the elementary school music program against budget cuts for full-day kindergarten. Personally, I have played the violin since I was in 4th grade, and in my sophomore year, I started to sing with lyrics, the mixed honor choir at the high school. Next year, I will be attending Harvard University and I'll be pursuing a chamber singing ensemble there. My sister, who graduated from Harvard last year, played the piano for 10 years and also sang through high school and college. My brother played the violin for nine years and is now an aspiring DJ. Clearly, music is a huge part of the Lee household and it has been since we were kids in elementary school. Since I started it in 4th grade, it is a skill and appreciation that builds every year with practice and adds another dimension to my life. Very frankly, I do not understand why Log Mano has continually put the elementary school program at risk. It would be a decision without foresight to the impact on our incredible high school music program and blatantly ignorant of the concrete facts of music's benefits to the developing mind. Neuropsychologist Ani Patel of Tuss University champions the acronym OPERA to define the positive functions of music. I will explain and expand upon his scientific benefits while adding my own personal narratives. We will begin with O, which is the overlap. This is the way the networks in the brain overlap and integrate almost every area of the brain simultaneously, almost like an orchestra. By developing the mathematical skills of the left half of the brain and the creative capacities of the right hemisphere, music engages the entire brain and strengthens the routes between the two sides. And just music appreciation isn't enough. There must be active musical participation. The skills that music teaches young developing minds, the ability to understand emotions and voices, the ability to multitask, these should not be easily underestimated simply because they are not quantifiable skills. It is completely different engagement of the mind than other academic subjects and even other arts. P is the precision in playing a musical instrument and the high processing speed that being a musician requires. Learning music develops a neuropsychological distinction between sounds that translates into not only improved academics, but also emotional development. Music making promotes brain plasticity, or in other words, the changing of the brain structure with experience. When I think of precision in music, I think of the artistic aspects of it. A fellow singer once told me when I was frustrated with the concert performer, performance, that there is a finite set of notes and a rhythm, but there is an infinite possibility of artistry and soul you can put into a piece of music. E stands for the emotion of music. When I think of my high school schedule now, lyrics is such a lovely break in the monotony, a space in my linear day that utterly captivates my mind in such a refreshing way. And that is what making music is. It is not only a proven scientific benefit, it is a joy, a fascination that continually enthrawls and immerses the mind. I think it is an empowerment that should not be denied the children who would absorb the benefits of this happiness the most. When you are making music, you are counteracting the rigor of the day. You are breaking the silence of the lecturing classroom and filling it with sounds of expression and harmony. You are creating and you are sharing. R is the repetition of music. Teaching music in elementary school begins this exploration into the world of music. There is discipline in music and there is work ethic in music performance, and it starts when you are young, recognizing the need to practice and improve in order to perform. I remember waiting anxiously every week to show Mrs. Lauser, my first violin teacher, the latest violin exercises I had mastered, tearing up my Practice Beginner Suzuki book and devoting myself to Twinkle Twinkle Little Star like it was the defining goal of my life. Repetition, slowly ingraining good practicing habits. The music exists in spaces of time other than the final performance. It exists in the time between sight-reading music for the first time, practicing, circling spots you have the most trouble with, practicing, tapping the rhythm on your foot, listening to the sections around you, practicing, running through the piece, and then you perform. Repetition, that is the work ethic in music and dedication to the craft that I still genuinely value today. And finally, our last component is A, attention. I know that making music puts people in a different state of mind. You are so thoroughly concentrated on learning a new piece or perfecting your technique that you exist only in the music and you could be weightless or even flying. I think that is something we all crave, that level of beautiful simplistic absorption into something you love. Music has remained one of those passions in my life that I can continually rely on to give me that sense of purpose and pure concentration, which is saying something right now since I'm a second semester senior in high school. Elementary school is only the beginning. Elementary school instruction is the foundation, and it's where I fell in love with music and started my journey to the musical capabilities and close-knit friendships I have today. My musical development in elementary school was crucial so that I could build and grow in middle school and then be able to perform at the level of musicianship that our high school music program has achieved. So, with all that music has given me, mentors, teachers, friends, enhanced cognitive abilities, dedication, and liberation, I believe the 4th and 5th graders of the Long Meadow Elementary Schools should always deserve this opportunity. Music has been a joy in my life. It is a lifelong skill and it should not be undervalued in the Long Meadow public education system. Thank you.
Thank you. You did it! All right.
Maybe a couple more students.
Students, who, do you wish to speak before the concert this evening?
Like, I hadn't prepared anything.
Okay. All right. I was just giving the opportunity because I know this meeting conflicted. And one more thing, Michelle, I apologize. I did forget to announce that we do have a school committee member participating remotely due to distance, so Michelle is on speakerphone with us this evening. So, I'm sorry, Michelle. I kind of got caught up here in the kids going to the concert.
No problem at all.
Okay. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Doyle to give the presentation this evening, and then we will open up the floor for further comments and discussion, okay? Best of luck in the concert this evening.
Thank you very much.
Well, soon.
Good evening. The school committee heard this presentation previously, but it is our tradition to repeat it again so that people who are here visiting for public comment are able to review the budget before speaking. Our vision is to have students completing an education at Long Meadow Public Schools so they'll be fully capable of excelling in a global community. Our mission is to prepare learners to achieve to their full potential, cultivate confident, critical thinkers and problem solvers, develop the skills and habits of mind for lifelong learning, contribute to a global community, maintain a safe educational environment. Our graduates are highly successful. We know that from watching their career paths. They go on to be doctors, lawyers, artists, politicians, musicians, financial advisors, scientists, media specialists, engineers, teachers, humanitarians, entrepreneurs, linguists, state senators, and more. Over the past year, there have been many accomplishments in the district. The NITCH report ranks Long Meadow High School 25th out of 100 schools. It also ranks Long Meadow Public Schools 24th out of 100 schools. The Pioneer Valley Teacher Awards recognizes our excellent teachers every single year. We have a new teacher that's recognized as well as three veteran teachers. Long Meadow High School, Glenbrook Middle School, and Williams Middle School achieved Level 1 status as designated by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We also had four community presentations, three that were presented by the Special Programs Committee as well as a presentation by Shelley Warren and Pam Chaplin. Our presenters from the Special Programs Committee were Dr. Poty, Christine DuVivier, and Lynn Lyons, and that was a huge success last night where we think that we had over 400 people in attendance. Technology implementation continues to thrive as we've expanded and we have it implemented at all grade levels. We are also using BYOD at grade 8, which just started in January. We have a new elementary math program and professional development continues to go on. New materials were purchased at the end of last year and are being used throughout our three elementary schools. We continue to have collaboration. We're looking for grades 8 and 9 to make exit strategies for grade 8 so that students go into grade 9, meeting the expectations of teachers at that grade level. The same thing is occurring in grades 5 to 6 where the 6th grade teachers are outlining what they hopes, what skills they hope students arrive with, and they'll be meeting with 5th grade teachers so that those exit strategies are agreed upon to enhance and strengthen our educational system. We have science and social studies reviews underway. Common data implementation is now occurring at the elementary and middle schools using AIMS Web as well as other assessment tools. We also have literacy in progress. We added literacy coaches at the elementary as well as literacy specialists at the middle school, and our fine arts accomplishments are many. Tonight, we have the, we have the orchestra playing in the gym with students from grades 4 through 12 performing together. We have full-time adjustment counselors at the elementary school. That's been well-received. We understand that we're helping more students and able to help them solve their problems so that they're more successful in school. Social skill programs are underway at Center and Wolf Swamp as well as Blueberry is examining a program to bring on next year. Advisory is up and running at both middle schools. We headed at Williams and it's expanded to Glenbrook this year. Elementary collaboration time is in place thanks to the settled contract where teachers meet after school on Monday and Wednesdays to discuss curriculum, assessment, student achievement, and more. We have a very strong women's health program at the high school, including rape aggression defense course as well as a multitude of other curriculum ideas that are being shared among women. We've had the addition of AP macroeconomics at the high school, foundations of English at the high school, and we've seen an increase in the sections of community service learning. There were several curriculum initiatives underway. When I came, we arrived, we set up a curriculum cycle so that every year we were continuing to build upon the curriculum that we had when we were doing reviews. Literacy has been ongoing. We've continued the implementation of elementary balanced literacy, including writers' and readers' workshop. We've updated elementary and middle school classroom libraries. Foundations, which is a phonics program, has been now implemented in grades 1 to 2. Word studies being implemented in grades 4 to 5. Writing to text has been implemented at the high school. And math, again, is the first year of math expressions. The middle school continues alignment of the scope and sequence in math. And Long Meadows High School's addition of the new algebra to text is in place. In social studies, elementary scope and sequence reviews are underway. Middle school scope and sequence are also under review. It's the first year with the new text in world history at the high school. In science, the middle school and high school are aligning the curriculum to the new National Science Teacher Association and NCR, National Research Committee, Next Generation Science Standards. Elementary committee is piloting and choosing new science and materials that we hope to purchase at the end of the year for use next year. In technology, new standards were implemented in grades K through 8 this year. They were written last year by a team of technology teachers as well as classroom teachers. Chromebooks, iPads, and laptops are in all the schools. The BYOD model's been expanded to 8th grades at both middle schools. The district technology plan review and update is to be done by the newly formed technology committee, which met today. We have video production studio environments at all of the schools right now, and this technology integration occurring across the curriculum. We're very proud of community service. Long Meadow is a community that gives back time and time again. Community is strong throughout the district at all the schools. This is just a sampling of the different programs that are being conducted in our six schools. Helping hand sandwich makers for the homeless, pennies for patients to support those fighting cancer, toiletry collection for the Springfield Rescue Mission, non-perishable collections for A Hope For Every Child, holiday gift baskets for children in need, book drive for the Springfield Public Schools, jump rope for Heart, collections for the Long Meadow Food Pantry, Daken Animal Shelter collection, Mayflower Marathon food donations, can jam tournament to benefit cystic fibrosis, and key club members who volunteer in the community. Collaboration among schools is highly valued. We strive to make sure that there's communication so that three elementary schools are on the same page as well as the two middle schools. We're looking at vertical and horizontal alignment as I alluded to earlier. So, we have vertical curriculum planning. Common assessments include AIMS Web, common midterms and finals at the high school. Transition planning, I've already discussed. The common middle school schedules have been fully implemented this year where there was a committee last year and they now share the same schedule so that staff can be shared. There's professional development opportunities that have been expanded in the middle school BYOD. Our high school students continue to excel and one of the measures that we use is the SAT. If you take a look at Long Meadows average compared to the Massachusetts and national average, we should be very proud of our accomplishments. SATs and critical reading, 566, math, 575, writing, 551, and combined scores of 1692. In advanced placement statistics, our students continue to soar. 211 students took a total of 480 AP exams. 90% of exam scores were three or above on a scale of 1 to 5. 62 federal, presidential academic excellence awards were given to the class of 2015. We had 38 advanced placement scholars, 47 advanced placement scholars with honors of distinction or distinction, and eight advanced placement national scholars. On our MCAS, we continue to see, we continue to see improvement in many areas. If we take a look at the number of students in the advanced category and the proficient, that's where the majority of the students are. We don't rest on our laurels. We continue to address students that are in the needs improvement and warning category. The math scores were particularly strong. If you take a look at the performance of those in the advanced category in math, we're performing extremely well. This is a district-wide chart. There are many factors that drive the budget and we want to review a few of those with you. We take a look at the data and we analyze it to see what's happening with student learning and achievement. We refer to our strategic plan because we set a course for a five-year plan and we're following that. We have contractual obligations that we need to fulfill. We had free full-day kindergarten as a priority of the school committee. We had enrollment projections that we look at, mandates and regulations, including common core assessment, educator evaluation, special education. We look at technology implication and the ongoing costs that are occurring due to the implementation, and we look, we had a, we had a change in circuit breaker on that. This is the FY '17 revised budget. The, the difference is that the general fund had a difference of $1,085,976. Grants had a deficit of $4,804. Special revenues had a deficit of $634,273, including taking out the kindergarten fee. And the total budget summary is an increase of $446,899. This pie graph gives you an idea of where the money is going by fund. You can see that the general fund is the majority of money. That's 92%. Circuit breaker comes in second with 3%. Other areas of revenue are Metco, school choice, regular education grants, special education grants, and other special revenues. If we break it down, where does your money go? We take a look, that staff salaries actually add up to over $27 million of the budget. We take a look, that staff salaries actually add up to over $27 million of the budget. Contractual services take up $7,228,000, and supplies and materials take $1,592,788. This pie chart gives you a breakdown by area. You can see that pupil services takes 33% of the budget, and then we have maintenance at, that's not maintenance, the high school at 20.8%. The elementary schools all come in around 7%, so that the majority of the budget is taken by a few areas and it's spread out through these other areas. Instructional and development gets 2%, technology gets 2.7%. This will give you an idea of what budget changes have been incorporated into the budget that's going to be presented to you tonight. There was a reduction due to enrollment changes for Williams Middle School classroom teachers, one Blueberry Hill Elementary School teacher, .6 Blueberry Hill Special Education teacher, .5 Center Kindergarten teacher, .5 Center Kindergarten Assistant. That's because if there's a full-day program, if free kindergarten is offered, there'll be no half-day program. And three district special education assistants. Other reductions included two middle school library assistants, out-of-district tuitions, school choice funding, attrition, miscellaneous reductions. Additions to the budget included cost of living increases, step increases, salary advancement for continued education for staff, transportation services, special education evaluations and services, .2 health teacher in curriculum for fifth grade, .6 foreign language teacher at the middle school, instructional elementary math materials, one library media specialist for the middle schools, and an increase in OT services. This is an explanation of the Williams Middle School teacher reductions that were built into the budget. There were fewer students at the middle school, so we are proposing cutting one team of teachers that currently teach in grade seven and eight. Glenbrook FY '17 projected enrollment will be 320. Williams FY '17 projected enrollment will be 351. The average class size for Williams for FY '16, grade seven, 17 students; grade eight, 16 students. Projected class size for FY '17 for Williams, grade seven, averaging 23 to 24 students; grade eight, averaging 21 to 23 students. Glenbrook, grade seven would be averaging 22 students; grade eight, averaging 21 students. We would add foreign language sections to the team structure at Williams Middle School and add an additional math section taught by the math lab teacher at Williams Middle School. These are the middle school enrollment projections. People have asked where we got our numbers. We use the October 1st report in order to determine our projections. We take the actual numbers, we look at them, we look at where there were surges, particularly first grade usually has a surge in population, and we base our enrollment projections on that data. This is the elementary enrollment and class size. We try to keep enrollment down around 17, 18 students. We're able to do that in most areas. Some of the classes go to 19, 20, 21. We're going to present three tiers tonight, so the question is why a tiered approach? The town general fund for FY '17 budget projection is $808,832, and it does not include funding for free full-day kindergarten. The $808,000 basically takes the contractual obligations, just the pay raises, and meets that need. Incorporating free full-day kindergarten into the general funds requires funding of The tiered approach will give school committee three options. The administrative team values all current programs and services listed on the tiered reductions and would prefer to see no tiered cuts. We'd prefer to ask the town for more money to support our initiatives. The tiered budget. Tier one includes free full-day kindergarten, requires an additional $277,144 in general fund revenues or cuts will need to be made. Tier two includes a full-day kindergarten fee of $1,250, requires an additional $155,645 in general fund revenues or cuts will need to be made. Tier three includes a full-day kindergarten fee of $2,000, requires an additional $61,895 in general fund revenues or cuts will need to be made. Tier one includes free full-day kindergarten. You can see that it's again, the general fund is approximately $800,000. The addition to the general fund would need to be appropriated, $277,143. So our total general fund request would go up from $808,000 to $1,085,976. If we do not get that extra money appropriated, these are the cuts that would need to be made. Library aid at $20,297. High school teacher yet to be determined at $51,913. A media specialist that was going to be shared between the two middle schools at $52,800. A literacy specialist at the middle school for $48,061. The grade five health and curriculum that came out of the committee that was recommended this year at $24,429. Elementary instrumental music, four and five, $76,960. Supplies, postage, travel miscellaneous for $4,000 for a total tier one reduction of $277,740.81. In tier two, we would ask for a tuition of $1,250 per family. We would still have the general fund appropriation of over $800,000. The kindergarten tuition revenue would bring in $156,250. The additional general fund appropriation needed would be $155,644.69. Therefore, the total general fund request would be $964,477. If we do not get the additional money, then the tier two reductions would include a library aid at the high school, a media specialist at the middle school, health teacher at the elementary school and health curriculum, grade four orchestra, professional development services, tech support, software and repairs, supplies, postage, travel miscellaneous, for the total tier reductions of $155,806.61. In tier three, there would be a kindergarten fee of $2,000. Again, we have the general fund appropriation of $808,008,000. The kindergarten tuition would bring in revenue of $250,000. We would need an additional general fund request of $61,894.69. Therefore, we'd be asking the town for a total general fund request of $870,727. Tier three, if we were not to get that appropriation, then we would cut the library aid from the high school, the .2 health teacher in curriculum for grade five, professional development services, tech support, software and repairs, supplies, postage, travel miscellaneous. So the total of tier three cuts would be $61,976.81. The revised budget is $35,647,872. The FY '17 budget, including the addition of free full-day kindergarten, would be $36,094,771. It would be a general fund increase of $1,085,976, and it would be a total budget increase of $446,899. This is new information that the school committee has asked a lot of questions over the past several days, so that this information has been added to the presentation since the last time. The FY, these are the increases to the general fund over the past five years. We have, this year, as you know, is $808,000, it's a 2.52 increase. In FY '16, it was $718,768 for a 2.29 increase. In FY 2015, it was $677,222 for a 2.21 increase. In FY '14, we got $263,000 for a .86 increase. And FY '13, we got $512,634 for a 1.71 increase. It also should be noted that back around 2009, the school committee used to go to town meeting every year to ask for additional funds. So that, prior to my time, it was something that was done annually that they went back asking for increases. We have not done that since I have been in Long Meadow. So we've been living with the increases given to us by the town. Again, what causes the budget to fluctuate? It's contractual obligations, transportation, special education, state mandates, the ELL program, instructional materials for curriculum reviews, staffing, enrollment, technology, and state reimbursement. We met with the town officials and went through any possible ways that we could come up with more funds, and this is a suggestion that we agreed to take a look at and would need you to consider. In the revised FY '17 budget, there were general fund offsets. $50,000 would come from natural gas. During our meeting, the town agreed that they would fund any deficit if that line went under what we kept in it. As you know, natural gas fluctuates, there's been a drop in prices, so while it looks like we can fund that right now, the danger is what happens if gas prices go up again. There's $22,000 in the circuit breaker fund balance. In building rental, we've been building up a base, they would like us to look at taking out $20,000. In the past, we've done things like we built up a reserve of $80,000 and put down a new gym floor at Williams. So when we have money in reserve in building rental, it goes for paintings. We've been painting in the elementary schools during the summer, hiring students. We've put down the gym floor at Williams. So we're eroding our base there for some of the work that we've done to maintain the buildings. And then $10,000 for the preschool fund. So that would be a total of $102,000 that could be one-time offsets to partially fund full-day kindergarten. So tier one implications. We would take the $102,000 in offsets and incorporate it into the budget. $175,000 would be needed from the town. Free full-day kindergarten would be provided. No half-day kindergarten programs would be offered for 2016, 2017. Chapter 7D funding, approximately $80,000 based on enrollment of 125 students would be reimbursed to us by the state the following year and thereafter for providing full free-day kindergarten for all students. So the town would end up getting money back by moving to full-day free kindergarten. In tier two, the implications of putting in the $102,000 is the following. We would need to charge a fee of $1,250. Half-day kindergarten would be added back in as required by law, and $54,000 would be required by the town. In tier three, there'd be $62,000 in offsets that would be incorporated into the budget. $2,000 tuition would be charged. Half-day kindergarten would be added back in, and no additional funding would be needed from the town. So here is the FY '17 revised budget. For FY '17, it's $36,44,771. It requires a general fund increase of $983,976. It's a total budget increase of $396,899. And again, we thank our community for their continual support of our schools. Long Meadow is an outstanding system, and it's thanks to the town and the people who work hard to keep our school system so successful.
You had questions about Williams Middle School and that. Should I put together some information that all of you have been asking? Should I present that now before you go to public comment? Okay. One of the first questions asked was historical projections and how we do it. The DESC looks at our enrollment and bases it on our October 1st report, and that's the information that we use. So that every year, we look at October 1st, we look at what was projected, what the enrollment was the previous year, and we look at what the actual numbers are. Then we use that information to make projections about class size, how many teachers we're going to need, things like that. This chart in the packet that I put at your place shows from 2011, '12 through this current year what the differences were, what the projected enrollment was based on the October 1st report, and what the enrollment actually was. You can see that it varies from grade to grade. Grade one in particular usually has a huge surge. We believe that's because of the kindergarten, the fee, and the half-day program. We see a lot of students returning from private placements. If we were to hone in on the middle schools, I took the information and broke it down to show you the changes in enrollment for each year. So in grade six, in 2011, '12, we had 13 more students than we thought. In 2012, '13, we had nine more. '13, '14, we had five more. 2014, '15, we had a huge surge of 17, and in '15, '16, we had another large group of 15 new students. In grade seven, in 11, '12, we had two students less than projected. In '12, '13, we had five more students than projected. '13, '14, three less than projected. '14, '15, seven more than projected. In '15, '16, we had five more than projected. In grade eight, in 2011, '12, we were on the mark. In '12, '13, we had five less students. '13, '14, we had two less students. '14, '15, we had eight more students. And '15, '16, we had seven more students. What I did is I took the five-year history and I put averages for how many students were increased over that five-year average. For grade six, it was an average of 11.8. For grade seven, it was an average of 3.6. And for grade eight, it was an increase on an average of 1.6. Next, I showed you what the class size would be if you had that average and added it to the current population. So for 2016, '17, grade six is projected to have 211 students. If you take the increases of 12 students, it becomes 223, and it would make class size approximately 22.3, based on 10 teachers. I mean 10 sections that students would study. It would be 10 teachers. It would be five, including oral language. In grade seven, the projection is 223 students plus an average of four new equals 227, divided among the 10 teachers, it would be 22.7 students per class. And in grade eight, if you took the average, 227 plus two new students, you got 229, the average is 22.9. But then below it, I also showed you if the current trend continues, that we have large enrollment, like the eight and seven students, then it would be 227 plus eight equal 235, which would be an average of 23.5 students. The middle school is a little challenging, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that. In the middle school, we have leveled math in the seventh and eighth grade, and that impacts class size. It's not like the elementary where you can just have an average where every single class is about the same size because you move students. In the middle school, a lot of the scheduling occurs around math, and it depends how many students are in algebra or pre-algebra or in the seventh grade higher or average section. Because of that, there are ranges in what the class size is. So what we did here is we put together a chart to show you what the range in class size was and what the class size average has been. The first thing I'd like to show you is that the average at Williams Middle School has been 16 and a half students in grade seven and 16.86 students in, sorry, Williams, grade eight, 16.3. So class size has been relatively low. At Glenbrook, the seventh grade's been averaging about 19.5. The social studies, science go ups to 20.1, and the math ELA at Glenbrook in grade eight was 22.2. So we've had some variation in different class sizes, but Williams has enjoyed relatively low class size, in fact, lower than any middle school that I know of. If you take a look at the range, we showed you what the range was. There were There were class sizes. For example, take the first line, Williams, in math and English Language Arts. The range went from students in a class of 12 to students in a class of 22. It gave you an average of 18.67. And if you follow across, in 2013, 14, the range was 11 students in a class to 22. 2014 to 15, the range was again, again 11 to 22. In this past year, the range was 12 to 22. Are there any questions on this? Okay. The math really skews it so that you cannot come up with consistent class size. What we did is we looked at 2016, 17 projected class sizes as we proposed during budget season. What we did is we, the Williams Middle School in grade seven and eight would, would have six sections. The way that you come up with how many sections there are is you take the social studies, the math, the English Language Arts, and the science, that's four sections, and foreign language is the fifth section. So because there are larger class sizes at Williams Middle School, we're going to take the math specialist and the ELA specialist and have them teach one section. So instead of dividing it among five teachers, it will be divided among six. So it would bring average class size to 20, to 21, to 20, 21 and 20. But keep in mind, it will be skewed because of that math class. So you could see a range anywhere going down into the teens up to like 28, 29. That happens in middle schools all the time because of the math groupings. It is not uncommon to see the accelerated math groups with high numbers in it. In Glenbrook, we looked at math and ELA, and we had divided it among the five teachers and come up with an average of 22 to 21. And because Williams and Glenbrook, for science and social studies, they're divided among five sections. At Williams, only five. The class size would go up to 25, 24. Again, it would vary. You could have classes that could go down into the high teens. You could have classes that could go into the high twenties because of the, the math placement. Glenbrook should, would have a range too, but would not be as broad because the class size would not be quite as high as Williams. In 2017, 2018, this is the projected class size. You see that grade seven, the numbers go down to 107 students, while the eighth grade would still remain large at 124. We would compensate for the larger class size at Williams by putting in the math and ELA specialist for one section so that the students would, would be divided among six instead of five, therefore reducing the class size to 21. The seventh grade could just use the teachers on team with the world language and have class size of 21. Glenbrook would also have average class sizes of 21, 22. Williams, for the science, social studies, we would not have the additional person to put in, so again, class size could be large there. The average would be 25. It could go to the high twenties, and it could go as, as low as the low twenties or high teens, based on variation. Here's 2018, 2019. By this time, class size would be low. We would not use the math specialist or ELA specialist, and class sizes are reasonable and quite manageable. Here's 2019, 2020. Again, our, our range goes from 19 to 22. 20, 21, again, the range goes from 19 to 22. People have asked about the, what would happen if we added a team back to Williams? If you added a team back to Williams, it would mean that, that class, average class size for grade seven would be 16 students. Grade seven, eight would be 15 students. The grade eight team would be 17 students. And the grade seven, eight team would be 16.5. It would also mean that Glenbrook Middle School would have 22 students in, in grade seven and 20 students in grade eight, making an inequity in class size that has, that has been a problem in the past. One thing that we did before is we had a travel team that went back and forth between Williams and Glenbrook. They teach two sections at Williams. They teach two sections at Glenbrook Middle School. If you do this, then it, it gives more sections to divide, to divide the students among. So if we did this in grade seven, you would have class size of 20.8. The travel team would have 20 students. Williams' grade eight would have 19.6. The travels team would have 20 students. For Glenbrook, it would bring the class size down to 18 students. And for grade eight, it would bring Glenbrook down to 17 students. There would be budget implications clearly of adding a traveling team, that we had to redo our thinking on what, what that would mean. The current general fund appropriation is 808,000. If you can, if you choose to fund free full-day kindergarten, that's another 277,144. The cost of a middle school travel team would be 219,500, 219,519. We could reduce a foreign language teacher because the traveling team would compensate for enrollment, so we wouldn't need that position. So that would be a reduction of 23,517. By adding a traveling team, it would raise the general fund request to 1,281,978. We would offset that with the 102,000 that we talked about earlier in the budget presentation. We would bring in revenue of 250,000 by charging $2,000 for a kindergarten fee. We would have to add back in half-day kindergarten for 34,751. So our total general fund request would be 964,729 instead of 808,000. Should we not get the additional 155,000, the following cuts would need to be made. Library aide at 20,000. Media specialist at 52,000. Health teacher and curriculum for grade five at 24,000. Fourth-grade orchestra at 27,000. Professional development at 15,000. Tech support, software and repairs for 10,000. Supplies, postage, and travel for 7,000. So the Tier Two totals would be 155,806.61. Okay. Are there questions?
I have a question about your travel team.
Yes.
They would have five sections?
Or would they?
The travel team.
The travel team would have four sections because you need to allow them time to go back and forth. So you lose a period by having a travel team.
But from building to building, we talked about five minutes. So why do we lose a whole section because of revenue?
It was done previously. That was the agreement made, and we would have to go and pass practice. It's, because by the time you talk to students at the end of class, that takes time. You're packing up your books and materials. You, you, you need to run off in different buildings. But when we went through this before, when it was done, it was agreed that it would be four sections.
Well, I think that if we're looking at maybe not having the team at all or having a compromise on that particular issue, I think we might want to look into that.
Okay.
So I, I'd first like to just thank the admin team for the immense work that they have put into this, not only the presentation that was made last Monday evening, but the adjustments and the, the adjustments after we met with town officials, the adjustments and the explanations about the middle school travel team. So I just want to thank all of you because I know it's been a long week in working all of those numbers. What I'd like to do is open it up to public comment and questioning and school committee comment and questioning so that we can hear from the public and we can also get our own questions answered. So I'd like to start.
Could I just make one preliminary comment? So just as a matter of how we look at the budget, I don't think it's, you know, Williams Middle School versus the center kindergarten teacher versus music versus kindergarten. I think from the committee's perspective, or at least from my perspective, I'd, I'd really like to hear why certain things are important, why you feel they're important. But it's not so much, in my mind, maybe we just say we need what we need, and then the town has to decide, can they fund it or not? And then if they can't, then we look at whether we have to go to the town meeting or not. So I don't see it as this or that. It's really, what do we need in the budget? And then, you know, we vote on it, and that's what the committee does. So I just want to make it clear that I don't see this as this or that. So I don't think it needs to be presented that way because I'll take any input you have on any of those issues.
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. Well, here I am again, year three. But before I talk about full-day kindergarten, I'd first like to address the other piece of the budget and the concerning cuts to staff at Williams Middle School. Included in the presented budget is a cut to an entire team of teachers at Williams. The team consists of four seventh and eighth grade teachers, and that team has been in existence since at least 2010, when the team was shared between Glenbrook and Williams. And then in 2013, when it was placed solely at Williams due to their growing student population and needs. Cutting this team would go against everything that prior principal Chris Collins stated and recommended to the school committee just eight months ago, when he discussed at great length the staffing and enrollment needs at Williams Middle School. Specifically, Mr. Collins stated to the school committee on June 8th, 2015, the following. "The administrative team recommends that we maintain our current structure and staffing model as this model works. The team also recommends that the district reassess this situation in three to five years, based on updated population reports and student assessment data." Mr. Collins went on to further say, "Living in the buildings every day and doing this work every day with the kids and working with our staff the way that we are currently structured, we feel very strongly that what we are doing is working, and there is not anything that is apparent to us that would encourage us to do anything different. I believe everyone would agree that what Mr. Collins put in place is working, as he moved Williams from a Level Two to a Level One school last year, where it now joins Glenbrook, and we all know that is not an easy task to do. Just eight months ago, NESDEC projections for Williams placed enrollment to be relatively stable, as it has been in the past. In fact, it was not declining enrollment that brought Mr. Collins to speak to the school committee last year, but rather a fear of increasing enrollment and whether redistricting needed to occur to account for Williams' large student population. Mr. Collins' answer to the redistricting question was no. It did not need to happen. With the teams and staffing in place, he was confident that the students' needs were being met, and there was equitable accessibility to a high-quality education for every student. I would argue, cutting an entire team of teachers would change that. Williams currently has a successful language program in place for students with language-based learning disabilities. Because of this program and its ability to meet the needs of its students, many families are choosing to have their children come back to the Long Meadow schools from out-of-district placements. This, as you know, has saved the school district a substantial amount of money in out-of-district tuition costs. Cutting an entire team of teachers and automatically increasing class sizes would place the success of this language program and other special education programs and services at Williams in great jeopardy. Part of the reason for the success of Williams' special education programming is not only the staff, but also the fact that students are able to be supported with regular education classrooms because of the small class sizes. And as a result, these students are thriving. Moving a school from Level Two to Level One, as Mr. Collins did, is because of his ability to address the needs of students with disabilities and narrow the proficiency gap. Cutting an entire team from Williams Middle School increases class sizes, going again, goes against all recommendations by Mr. Collins last year and changes what has proven to work for Williams Middle School. It would not be in the best interest of any student. I ask that you please rethink these cuts and come back with a revised budget that the school committee has time to discuss. Now for full-day kindergarten. Trying to absorb the cost of full-day kindergarten within a school budget that was never set up or designed to account for the program or grade would once again not be in the best interest of any student, whether you look at the proposed Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three. The time has come for the town to join the school and work together to make full-day kindergarten accessible to every child next year. Long Meadow is now the only district in western Massachusetts to not offer universal full-day kindergarten. We are one of the last in the state, and of the students in the half-day program last year, a disproportionate high number were designated as high needs by DUCY. The very students who have the highest probability of falling behind their peers are starting off with only half the education exposure. This must stop. Universal full-day kindergarten is not an option anymore. It is the standard in education. The town will always defend their budget. In fact, it is a large reason the schools are in the predicament they're in right now. In 2010, and again in 2013, despite the step increases for teacher salaries, cost of living increases, and the necessary introduction of new initiatives, including RTI, the town requested and the school submitted a decreased budget for 2011 and 2014. Doing that, reducing the foundation to an established school budget while still incurring yearly salary and cost of living increases, is now taking its toll. Adding insult to injury is the fact that in 2013, the town claimed deficit, asked the school to make cuts and present a level budget, which they did, and then the town ended with an excess amount of money and funded a record amount of capital projects in one year. Another year, the town threatened cuts to all desirable town programming, including the library and senior center, if kindergarten was to be funded. Based on those threats, a vote to fund kindergarten was turned down at town meeting, and that same money that had been requested for kindergarten was later used to fund another town initiative, and no cuts occurred. Not surprisingly, this year, the town is once again stating that they are facing a deficit, despite spending over $1 million on a site assessment for a new DPW that would total over $15 million, take away playing fields, and turn a residential area into an industrial one. $1 million was just pulled from their budget for something that will likely never take place. Enough is enough. There is a purposeful separation between, between the town and school budgets. If full-day kindergarten is something you believe should be offered to every child and not just those who can afford it, you need to stand behind it. Defend it to the town. Have the school budget reflect the increase needed amount. For anyone to say that a tax override would be needed to fund a program that has a recurring cost of around $200,000 is nothing more than a fear tactic. The town just pulled over $1 million out of their budget for a site assessment. Year after year, they have gone into town meeting with funds in excess of the required savings amounts, and now they're looking to build a $15 million DPW. If an override is needed to fund full-day kindergarten, it is not because of the $200,000 cost of the program, which is less than 1% of the town's budget. It is because of the town's prior and current spending. Schools are the driving force behind real estate prices and the tax money that comprises town funds. As a tax-paying resident and a parent of children in the schools, I am equally invested in both the town and schools. I live here. However, maintaining a legacy of educational and town excellence does not happen by maintaining the status quo. It's built on hard work and continuing to move forward, and right now, Long Meadow schools are behind the starting line. The time has come for our town to stand behind its schools and provide an equitable education to every child from the start. Thank you.
Ms. Worland, would you like to speak? I know you're here from the concert.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kayla Worland, and I have the honor of chairing the music department at Long Meadow High School. I've taught in Long Meadow since 1995, when dinosaurs roamed the earth. The first day I came to Long Meadow to interview for my job, I saw little kids riding their bikes to school, carrying their trombones. Now, when you look at a nine-year-old riding a bike, carrying a trombone, and I know you've seen it on, on our streets here, that says passion. It says a fire has been ignited in that nine-year-old to do something new, to form habits of mind that they will not find anywhere else. And I beg of you, let's not squash that fire before it has a chance to develop. The kids at the high school who we just heard, who are so fabulous, who are going to represent us on the deck of the USS Missouri in Hawaii next week, didn't start playing when they got to Long Meadow High School. That fire was ignited when they were nine years old and when an instrument was placed in their hands for the first time, and they got to hold it and they got to make sounds. It's such a crucial stage. It's such an excited stage. Let's not, shall we say, rob Mozart to pay Beethoven? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla.
Anyone else from the public is welcome to, to speak.
Peter Thompson, 753. Frank Smith.
Peter Thompson, 753 Frank Smith Road. I had the privilege and honor of being a music teacher here for 35 years. Was the first coordinator of music. I created that position for free because it needed to be done in 1981. And so, I came here in '73, and we had 60 strings at the high school. Some people think this new program just came about, but it didn't. It was a really wonderful instrumental program, kind of a beleaguered vocal program at the time. And in the 80s, we experienced a thing called Proposition Two and a Half. Some of you may remember that. And in the infinite wisdom of tax cutting, we went from starting students at third grade for strings and fourth grade for winds to sixth grade, I think, at the time. At that point, we went from 60 strings to 13 at the high school in 1985. I'm going to bring a little history to the floor. So we've done this experiment before. And so, we had 13 strings, we no longer had a very large concert band, and a very small wind ensemble, and Mike Mucy, who I hired in 1978, we had the infinite wisdom to send him to become a middle school teacher. He had been a vocal teacher primarily at the high school. So he spent quite a few years at the middle school, because he's a fabulous teacher, obviously, did a lot to build that program even under tough circumstances, and eventually fought our way back to beginning strings in fourth grade and beginning wind percussion in fifth grade, which is where we stand now. We also, as coordinator, I had an opportunity to get involved in staffing a little bit, and then I moved on to the high school, where I was director of fine and applied arts, until Mike took over in the middle of 90s. We now haven't had a coordinator of music in Long Meadow, to my knowledge, for about 16 years. So the teachers are left on their own. Very fortunately, we have some really fine teachers in our staff right now. If we begin to lose them, it's really hard to replace them. Principals will tell you that they're not necessarily as well-versed in replacing a music teacher as maybe the assistants they might have received once from a coordinator, which we don't have any longer. I beg of you, just on a structural thing, I've been through this now. I was here for 35 years, watched it rise and fall and rise again, until we, you know, won three Grammys at the end of the 90s and beginning of 2000, mostly because we had 50% of the high school in the music program, something unheard of. We were considered top 16 music schools in the United States, competing with fine art schools. Now, what's so great about that? What was great about that is one in two people walking down the hall were in music. The quarterback for the football team was in music. Everybody of every group and constituency in the high school was in music, not to become professional musicians, although we have a pretty good roster of those, but because music makes a difference. It was so well-articulated by Jerika earlier, I could not begin to do the job she did of telling you what it does to people's brains. A lot of people argue that it's a separate intelligence, and I think she made a pretty good case. The fact is that we have, yes, you have an interesting budget problem here, as you try to fund full-day kindergarten, which I fully support. As you try to fund another team, a traveling team, which I fully support. But juxtaposing it with the loss of a program that we've already seen the experiment will take decades to replace is just foolishness. It's absolute foolishness. You can't put it back once you wreck it. We've already done it, let's not do it again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Minella, I live at 35 Blockland Drive. I'll admit that I left last week's budget meeting in a little bit of a state of disbelief. We were talking about things such as leaving the middle school libraries unstaffed, cutting these music programs, which are obviously so important, and not offering full-day kindergarten. And it became clear to me that this is what happens when a district doesn't receive the support that it needs to run the schools the way the schools need to be run. This town has a very strong identity, and that identity is deeply rooted in the quality of these wonderful schools. A neighbor and friend of mine recently remarked that incoming residents could buy a house in a neighboring town that's newer, bigger, has a master bathroom, and is on more land, but they often choose Long Meadow because of our schools. This is not a young family issue, this is not a kindergarten issue, this is not a music issue, this is a town issue. I implore you to come up on your own with the budget you believe you need to have the best district you can, and bring that budget to the town. I think in doing so, you will not only improve the schools and keep them at their standard of excellence, but you'll also maintain the pragmatic, practical property value that every single resident in this town enjoys. And in addition to imploring you to go to the town for the budget you need, I equally implore my own residents, my own neighbors of this town, to contact the town board themselves and explain to them how important this budget is to this district. As always, I thank you for your time, but this time, I also thank you for this very difficult work that you do.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess Hutchins, 128 Hilltop. I have a question, just, well, first of all, I wanted to thank the superintendent and the school committee for adjusting the schedule this week. I know a lot of parents bugged you guys, and I know a lot of us parents are up here giving a hard time and, you know, don't want to forget to say thanks when you really made a big shift, and it was much appreciated. The speaker last night was great, and I thought it was telling of our culture to see so many parents out on a very cold winter night about anxiety in our children. So I hope it's a dialogue that will continue in our town, because I think it's a really important one. I guess I just wanted to start off by asking a question about tonight. My understanding was tonight was a public forum, and is that incorrect? It's a hearing, okay. A public, a hearing. So is it basically sort of open in terms of the public asking questions? Okay, because a lot of people have come up with prepared statements, and I was under the impression that it was-
I have the impression that questions from the public can be asked and answered.
Okay.
It's not like the public comments section of a normal meeting where it's the-
Yeah.
We thank you for your comments and we move on. This isn't a time for a dialogue, as far as my understanding.
Okay. That's, I wasn't sure if people understood that.
Can we make it clear that if somebody came up and wanted to ask a question, they still could?
Yeah. Like during the meeting, because when we ran the budget forums, it was more, it was in a different venue, so people sort of came and knew it was only for speaking, it wasn't done in a meeting setting. So that's why I just wasn't sure myself, and I wasn't sure if the audience was clear about that. So I appreciate just knowing that. Because I basically just have some questions, which I am sure, you know, you guys have questions as well. The bottom line of what I wanted to say, though, and again, I haven't prepared these, I was just taking notes as I was listening to everybody speak, that I've always seen, and I saw my job on the school committee, and I see your job as sort of how Russ stated it, being advocates for the school system, and really sticking your necks out, and we all elected you and hired the superintendent to be our voices for our kids and for our school system, to make sure that it's the best that it can possibly be. And I think that the people who have spoken tonight so passionately and so articulately about these programs, we've kind of gotten to a place where we really don't have a lot of room to move. I could go on and on about music, I'm passionate about music, I was part of the music program when Pete was a teacher, I was very blessed to be part of that program. It changed my life, Mike Mucy was my teacher as well, I'm very grateful to you guys. And I am also touched that you're here to speak tonight, it means a lot. I also think, you know, you guys always have a difficult task when it comes to budgeting, and so does the town, and it's not easy, because full-day kindergarten, we all know, early intervention is critically important. The more and more statistics that we see, the earlier children are getting full-day education, the better they're doing in the long run, and that is critical. I think in terms of the middle school cuts, my gut reaction to that was, it's just the wrong direction. I understand, and I said I was going to be asking questions, and here I am talking.
I figured you could ask a question at some point.
I do this, I will, I swear.
I'm kidding.
I, you know, I just, philosophically, I think, as a school committee, you know, you kind of have to sit back and say, we have all these numbers and all this data, but what are our priorities? Class size should be, like, really right up there, class size, class size, class size, because when you look at quality of education, you're looking at the ratio between students and teachers and staff, right? So I vehemently would encourage you to go out there and advocate to keep that in place at the middle school and not to go in the wrong direction, because as Pete Thompson mentioned, once you lose and you cut staffing, it's like penny wise, pound foolish. You're saving a few bucks, but you're losing huge value to our education that you can't replace easily. It's really difficult. So my question, one of my questions is, I was under the impression that there was a level service mandate that came from the select board. They said, "Provide us with a level service budget." Is that correct information or incorrect information?
It was in the letter, but it's not a level service budget.
Obviously.
The $808,000 is just what the contractual obligations are in terms of just the pay raises.
Not even.
Not even?
Not even. The amount appropriated from the town does not fully cover a level service.
So, but they did, you referenced a letter. They requested, their formal request to the school committee was level service?
The budget instructions provided the instruction of, "Provide us a level service budget." However, when we met with the town officials and the select board back in October, we were given a number of what we could expect as appropriations from the town, which is the 808 something-something, the one that we just have been rounding to the 808.
Right.
So that's not, that does not provide level service, no.
So basically, they said, "Provide us with a level service budget, but we're only going to give you this much money," kind of like the state and federal educational mandates. So that would be, you know, the starting place for the negotiation is level service, you know, really sticking to level service when you're talking to the select board, because as, you know, you stated and I'm stating, this is obviously not a level service budget. The Circuit Breaker Fund, could somebody on the committee just clarify? A lot of people are confused about exactly what it is. I'm pretty certain it's special education reimbursement, but if somebody could elaborate a bit, I think it would be helpful.
Tom, for Tom Marie.
I can do it.
Tom!
Sure, it is a state funding that we receive for special education costs that exceed a formula that the state basically sets every year. So for students that we pay tuition for, or that we have in-district programs for that exceed a certain cost, the state will then reimburse us on a percentage. That percentage varies, it's usually somewhere between 70 and 75% above the threshold that they set every year. That threshold is somewhere around $40,000 to $42,000. So the district would incur the first 40, say $40,000 of the tuition or educational cost, and then anything above that, we would get reimbursed 75% of our expenses.
Also important, it's previous year expenses.
Correct. It's reimbursed a year behind the incurring of an expense.
And this year, that was included in, I'm having trouble finding it. It was a reduction or an addition?
Yeah, so in FY16's budget, we have about $1.3 million budgeted. Included in that is about $230,000 in carryover money. We receive approximately a million or just over a million dollars every year. Again, that can fluctuate based on actual students and programs. We do anticipate receiving that million dollars, but we don't anticipate having any carryover money. So the reduction that you're seeing in the budget is really not having that available to us in FY17. So in order to utilize the funds we have, we had to shift some of those tuitions to the general fund.
And how much was shifted to the general?
I'd say it's about $127,000 or so.
For this budget?
For FY17's proposed budget.
Okay. And then, also, for school choice, are we carrying a balance of 300? Is that an accurate number in that?
Ballpark ending balance in FY, at the end of FY16 would be about $300,000, $310, maybe. Again, the reimbursement or the amount we receive in revenue fluctuates, we have to submit a report, usually in March, Diane, is that when it's due? And then they adjust it based on actual students and special ed services that school choice students receive, we get reimbursed on some of those costs also.
But it's a flat general fee, isn't it?
It is for each student, but then there is incremental additional-
For special education students, yeah. Is it still $5,000 as a flat rate?
It is.
Okay. Wow, it hasn't increased in a long time.
A long time, I think since the program inception.
That's interesting. That's too bad.
Versus our per-people spending, which is around $14,000.
And you're, the committee is still taking approximately four students in, per school year for school choice?
Historically, that is what we have done. Committee hasn't voted yet for next year. Finance sub has made a recommendation, it will be on the February 26th agenda to approve the slots for FY17.
Okay.
Is it four for the whole district, or four per grade?
No, four for kindergarten. So we open up four new slots every year, just in kindergarten, and that has been historically what we've done for at least the last four or five years, I would say.
So we don't look at every grade, we only look at, okay.
Yeah, we used to look at every grade-
Yeah.
And look at where we could fit students in.
Right, and I think the rationale, at least from my understanding on finance sub last year, was that because of the disparity in education background, once you get into the higher grades, it's very difficult for students to acclimate, because they've not had the foundations that Long Meadow students have had, so-
Yeah, I understand it used to be just high school, and Mr. Landers is here, I don't know if he recalls, but it used to be just high school, and we had upwards of 100 and something students, 120, I think, at the max.
And it was only high school. In the school department, it was 25 a year at grade nine.
Correct.
But then MCAS came to be, so they highly recommended that we didn't just accept at grade nine anymore, and that's when the school committee started looking at other grades.
The foundation in kindergarten is very important, so we value opening it in kindergarten for our MECO and our school choice students, so that everyone has an equal playing field.
Yeah.
Do we ever look at more than four slots?
We haven't, like I said. In my time here, it's been pretty consistent for four in kindergarten.
Is there any benefit to having more than four?
To answer that question, it's difficult, because we don't know what kindergarten enrollment will be, and so if you open up more slots there, we potentially could run into a higher average class size, because we don't know move-ins and kids who aren't on the census and will enroll, you know, it's kind of a guessing game we play every summer, waiting and seeing what our final kindergarten enrollment will be. We have to make this decision, I think, by March, early March, so that we can hold a lottery. Have to do an application and open that for a period of time, and then we do a lottery usually in April.
The other challenge is that if we're just going to plug holes in grades where we can fit students, we're going to have an uneven number of students graduating out every year, which kind of creates sort of peaks and valleys and revenues, which creates another challenge. So at least for consistency's sake and maintaining that revenues don't spike and then fall, and spike and then fall, it's beneficial to at least keep an even number of students in.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this more, because-
That's what I was going to say.
About that, too, but this probably isn't-
I was, that was sort of what I was leading to.
I would say, one thing that we clearly see in all these enrollment pictures is that we're creating a situation by laying teachers off, that we don't even have any space potentially to do school choice. So even if we wanted to- So even if we wanted to, you know, it's, we're really creating a staffing situation, in my opinion, which we can get into later, but that creates, if we have a bubble at all, all the center class sizes are not very good at all. That could happen at Williams, it could happen at the elementary level, based on what we're about to do potentially, so. It's another complicating factor with school choices.
School choice is never simple, but I guess the reason I brought it up is because I think it's very worthy of a conversation because it is a way in which the school committee and schools have a way to fundraise. And granted, there are, you know, benefits and disadvantages, but one of the things that I've always felt is that it's a win-win for the students who come here and for the students in Long Meadow. Because in Long Meadow, one of the things unfortunately we can't offer is tremendous racial diversity. And school choice allows students, often from families who are very academically motivated, who provide their own transportation to these students to come to Long Meadow. And to add that also that racial diversity is priceless for our students, in my opinion. And that's my opinion. It's something I've always valued. So to me, the program's always been a win-win. But again, you know, you really have to look at where the students are coming in, but I wouldn't be easily dissuaded by uneven graduation numbers or, you know, kids catching up. Because again, you are looking at students and families who are really academically focused and motivated to make that effort. So again, I would just, you know, ask the school committee to take a look at something that seems it's sort of fallen by the wayside, that's all.
And I definitely would want to look at that kindergarten policy myself, but.
Well, Tom, just two questions. One is, do school choice families provide their own transportation?
Unless they're special education and their IP required, then we are required to provide it.
And then, am I correct, is that school choice is done by lottery?
Correct.
Right.
And so whoever, and then whatever students we accept as school choice then become ours financially.
Right.
Yes.
So whatever needs that they have, we then are providing as a resource.
And I think you still give priority to siblings of current choice students as well, yeah.
So even if it's costing us more than fourteen thousand dollars to educate them?
Yes, we absorb the cost of.
They're only giving us.
Rule of thumb would be yes.
But you don't create openings that are going to cause us to add staffing. So the only time that would possibly be an issue would be special needs situation. But, and the other thing is people move in all the time and they have different backgrounds potentially. So I'm not sure I completely, I mean, my kids moved in last year, they did fine on MCAS, and we had a different school we were going to.
Right, it happens.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's really, I think, a different discussion probably. I mean, I understand the point, but we need to talk about that more at some other meeting.
Well, I think the issue at the time was that there was such a large number of students that were coming in that, and it wasn't about bringing in, you know, like opening four slots or five slots. It was like twenty-five slots per grade. So you have now even a hundred students at the high school who are, in many cases, were being transported by bus. And it was creating a couple issues, but predominantly the larger issue was that the school committee at the time was kind of using school choice fund for whatever they kind of needed, which they, which there was a lot of talk on the other side of the fence about being better stewards of that money. There was a lot of politics involved that, you know, put a lot of scrutiny on the board at the time.
Right.
School choice doesn't make sense to try and make money.
And that's how it was being used by not, you know, some boards?
Well, it's still a valuable program.
Absolutely.
Yep.
And so I think finance sub is going to be discussing it and bringing a recommendation to our meeting on February twenty-second. And it's on the agenda there, so we can have that further discussion. So did you have any more questions, Jess?
Yeah, have you guys looked into locking into gas prices at all?
Mm-hmm.
Are you having any luck with that? Because Superintendent Doyle mentioned the fluctuating gas prices.
Yeah, I think she was referring to fluctuating consumption. We are locked in on both our kilowatt hour and our therm price through twenty-seventeen on the gas.
Do you know what the? I don't, you don't, I don't mean to.
Our commodity rate on natural gas is like just under ten cents.
Okay.
Then we have the distribution charges. I don't know our electrical costs off the top of my head. But it was a substantial increase. It was like a thirty percent increase from what our previous contract was.
For electric?
For natural gas, we were about seven cents a therm and we went to just under ten.
Okay. And then with the new math program, what, okay, so you mentioned that there's three hundred thousand in the school choice budget. Is it correct that we took a chunk of money from the school choice budget for the new math program this year? Or is that incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay.
When you say this year, you're talking about FY sixteen?
Last year.
I believe that that was actually purchased out of the general fund.
Okay.
I don't believe it was school choice.
Okay.
Yeah, it was unexpensive.
It was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in funds that were in the general fund. It's not school choice.
And it carries no recurring fee with it?
No, there is a cost built into FY seventeen's budget of thirty-six thousand, I think, for consumable materials, workbooks for the students. I think there's two per student.
Okay.
So I'm remembering that, per grade.
And that's a fee we didn't have.
We didn't have it before, I think a lot of it was copying and so on, but I don't know for sure.
We had some consumables, but we're just copying and they're using different programs, so it's not as dry as our fee will be.
Tom, do you have an approximation of about how much? If you look at the page where it says budget changes incorporated and then it says reductions due to enrollment, that list of one, two, three, four, five, six items, do you have an approximation of about how much? I don't want to catch you on the spot again, I just.
The reductions, Jess?
Yeah, the section that says reductions due to enrollment.
The Blueberry position was about sixty thousand. The middle school team is about two hundred and twenty thousand. Can you give me the other items because I don't?
Yeah, there's a point five, Blueberry Hills Special Ed.
The special ed position is forty thousand.
And then point five, center kindergarten?
The kindergarten program is thirty-five thousand.
For both?
Yeah, it's the assistant and the teacher.
Okay, and then the point five?
And the three FTEs for the ed assistance?
Yeah.
Sixty thousand.
What is that, what is the total, I don't have my calculator. What is the total? Sixty.
I have them sorted differently, so. It's, yeah, it's two seventy, yeah, it's about four fifty-ish.
Okay.
Ish, doing quick math, I'd have to go back.
So we're looking at about four fifty for those specific line items to.
And I can tell you the total reductions, even with the items listed below, is about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Okay.
The additions were about one point two million.
Jess, what were the ones you asked about? The special education teacher at Blueberry Assistant?
So I was just asking about this first paragraph here, where it says budget changes incorporated, reductions due to enrollment. It doesn't have page numbers on it, I was going to refer to a page number. So the first, the first section adds up to four fifty, and then with the other reductions, the total's seven hundred and seventy thousand. And then the additions total one point two, you said?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sure.
So if, I understand the circuit breaker, that's a state reimbursement program for the cost of special needs and special education programs, is that right?
Yes.
And it seems like one of the biggest spikes recently has been transportation costs. Those don't fall under, really?
They follow the foundation budget, but they'll follow the reimbursement.
Yes.
But knowing that money was coming would probably offset some of what we're asking.
It would, it's been talked about for years, but it has never been incorporated into the formula that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education uses to calculate the reimbursement.
So the district is solely responsible for?
Correct.
Okay.
Call your legislator.
Yeah. I just might.
Thanks.
That'd be awesome. So we got two hundred parents from Long Meadow calling.
We'd prefer emails.
Anyone else, questions, comments that they'd like to make regarding the budget, what was presented this evening? Come on up.
Laura Mulderig, Three Oxford Road. I wasn't going to speak after Stephanie Jasmine spoke because she really, I didn't want to waste everyone's time. She said everything that I wanted to say, especially regarding the middle school teachers, but I didn't want to sit there and just not express that. I really do feel that our town needs to keep the eyes on the prize, eyes on the child. And teachers are our biggest asset. And we need to keep our teachers in place. Class size is very, very important. Jamming a lot of kids into a classroom just takes away the learning, any learning opportunity. My son is in sixth grade now, his class sizes are twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's a tough, it's a tough situation, even with aides in the class. That was a question I did have. Does the budget include aides? If the class sizes do go up and are at twenty-seven, twenty-eight, like you suggested, does that require aides in the classroom at that point?
We hadn't discussed that. Normally, your class is at a twenty-seven, twenty-eight or you're on top level math, and usually those classes go well regardless of the sizes. But we had not discussed putting aides in the classes.
Okay, so the budget wouldn't include aides, additional aides at that point? And then I just, but I do just want to just reiterate, I do know that this is such a tough situation. Music is a very huge asset to our schools. There really, there's no, there's no great way to make cuts at this point. We just have to go to our town and just ask, you know, put our school budget forward the best that we can. My one question that I do have, nitpicky question, but I do just want to, because numbers do mean a lot in terms of the middle school. At the presentation last year that Mr. Collins made with Nicole Allen, compared to the numbers that you presented, both numbers are pretty similar for the two thousand seventeen. I think you came up with three seven, or six seventy for the total middle school population. One was six seventy, six sixty-nine. The difference that I'm coming up with is that you have nineteen more at Glenbrook compared to Williams than Chris Collins came up with. So I just want to just have that number double-checked to make sure that, I mean, I don't, I doubt that nineteen kids are moving over to Glenbrook this year.
We did check and we contacted Chris Collins. Chris Collins had recommended that we cut the team this year, so I want to be clear on that. This was Chris Collins's recommendation that we could do it, and that's why we proceeded with doing that. In terms of the numbers, Chris used the NESDEC report. And the NESDEC report only gives you grade level and how many total students at both middle schools. It does not break it down. So Chris estimated what he thought the numbers were going to be at Williams and the numbers at Glenbrook, based on his knowledge. And we contacted him again and said, how did you do it? And he just estimated, because there was no source. He did not use the October first numbers, which we use. So the numbers we're presenting are correct.
The numbers that you use actually has every child's name on it, because it doesn't seem like it's very hard.
Name, street they live on, what neighborhood they're in. Our information is accurate.
Because it's just so, it's so weird that the numbers are the exact same number. It's off by one student, but just nineteen are just at different schools.
And when Chris talked about the staffing structure too, he was talking about teams, to keep teams together, because in a middle school, you have teachers that have two preps, and we want them to have them, because one's a team meeting where you talk about kids and curriculum and make sure everyone's really doing well, and one's a prep. So when he was talking about a staffing model, he was talking about that. So, you know, in my opinion, I'd like to see both free full-day kindergarten and keep the team for another year, but I think these are discussions that school committee is going to have to have tonight.
And I think one other thing to point out about Chris's presentation is that was in regards to redistricting. And should students be redistricted at the middle school level in order to achieve more equity as it was at the elementary? And what his recommendation was, was no, keep everything in place the way it is because it's working based on redistricting, not about class sizes or not about future enrollment for that. So I just wanted.
He's definitely the staffing model, and he's right. We completely support the staffing model.
Right.
But it wasn't the number of teachers.
Right, but just, it's very important that, I mean, we have to keep our eyes on the prize and the kids need to have, I mean, teachers are the asset, we need to keep them in place.
Thank you.
There's a student who wished to speak and then.
Janet.
I'm sorry.
So I understand it's a different topic, but the underlying numbers should always be the same, you know, same data set. So I think that's why parents are confused, because it is a different topic, but our baseline should always be the same, we should be using the same data.
Hi, Chris Comey, one forty-six Silver Birch Road. I was a little bit late, I was at my son's concert. So I just have a couple of quick comments for the committee, if you'll indulge me. I've been in town about seventeen years, and I knocked on doors for overrides to save music. And it seems to be, and maybe somebody can explain to me structurally how the budget works, that music is always the default target. And, you know, in such a large budget, I can't imagine that there's not other areas that could be equally vulnerable when a shortfall appears. And it just seems one of two scenarios is true. One is, talking about cutting music gets people like me fired up and gets me to come to my first ever school meeting, our school committee meeting. Second is that it's not, it's not considered a valuable, integral part of our educational experience. And that's even more curious to me that that would, if that's the possibility. But I find it quite disturbing that there's not more creativity, more look beyond music, because for the past seventeen years, it's always been music is the go-to to cut. And I don't, if you could explain it, I'd be most grateful.
I think, Tom, no, 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 I'm not putting you on the spot to answer.
Thank you.
I think in our, when the budget was presented to us last Monday, and we had some of those same questions, you know, certainly it's not, that it's not a valued program. I think everyone on the committee realizes its value and importance. But when asked about, and I did make the comment on last Monday as well, you know, I fully understand, it's, you know, because we've been accused by the town of, well, you put music on the chopping block, so everybody comes out and everybody gets excited, and that's why you do it. And it's certainly not. Tom had explained it best, is we look to make cuts that are as far away from the classroom instruction as possible so that we can maintain class sizes and the programs and services that we already offer. What's unfortunate is we've gotten to the point that after you take away things like a health program and curriculum that has just been recommended for this year to be put in is the first thing on the chopping block. The media technology specialist for the middle school, which is brand new, is on the chopping block. After you take those away, and then after you start nickel and diming, you know, supplies and copying and pens and paper clips, to stay as far away from the classroom and the experiences that we have, it's the auxiliary programs that are affected, which is fourth and fifth grade instrumental music. There's not a whole lot else in our budget that can be cut. When we start looking at these tiers and we're talking about, you know, library aides and teachers and, you know, professional development and tech support and tech supplies, that's as, you know, I mean, you're getting up there in what's affecting the day-to-day experiences that our children are having. We already charge fees for all of our sports programs. And we charge fees for our extracurricular programs that we would like to see offered at no charge. It's not an easy situation. And so by all means, it's not meant with any disrespect to the music program or the fine work that they do. We do value that. It's unless we start looking at class sizes of, you know, we've committed at the elementary school of class sizes of around twenty. Our class sizes this year are as low as that they've. Our class sizes this year are as low as that they've ever been, in the high teens, right around twenty. And you're hearing that, you know, we're making, our proposal was made to remove a team at the middle school, which would put class sizes at twenty-five, twenty-six. We're hearing opposition to that. Well, it's class sizes or programming. When you have a defined amount of money to work with, you know, those are the choices and why it comes. It's not, it's not meant with disrespect. It's not meant to, because I know it's a very emotional issue for a lot of families in the community. And it's not meant to, you know, oh, it's on the chopping block again, you know, here they go. It's because we're trying to prioritize.
Do the, do the fees charged for sports and other activities, do they cover the entire cost of that activity?
No. The extracurricular programs that are offered after school, the enrichment programs, those are...
No, he's talking about sports.
Right, sports, no. But I had lumped both of those together, so I wanted to be clear. The extracurricular enrichment activities after school are fee-based, that are paying directly for the program, and that is a break-even program. The sports program, Tom, you can...
We just have to allocate something, because we've been covering the entire cost. What was that?
Well, we budget about seventy-five thousand in the budget for athletics. I think last year, we had an additional sixty-five thousand dollars. That was needed to break it even for FY fifteen. The year before that, it was lower than that. I want to say it was maybe twenty or twenty-five thousand. So at least a hundred thousand in the last few years has been added to the money that's collected from fees and gate receipts and so on.
That's at the high school level.
That is at the high school level.
And the music that we're talking, not talking about, the one that is on this tier one is for fourth and fifth grade.
Russ?
So I have three daughters, and one is in fourth grade, and I'm taking one. So, and I have all sorts of different types of potential conflicts, I guess, because I have three kids, and they're in different programs. And one's going to be going to kindergarten, which I said last meeting. So, and then they're going to go to middle school. So, you know, but from my perspective, you know, as a parent and also just a member of the community, I totally agree with you. I think that it's not, music is important to the system. It's one of the reasons people move here. So I don't think we can say, you know, in my mind, it's just another class that we need to support. So if that's the case, and, you know, I look at kindergarten and I say, if we think that's public education, then you shouldn't have to pay for it. If we think it's not public education, then we should charge what it costs. You know, those are really the two ways to look at it. So I think it is, right now, we're presenting basically what we've been given and showing all the different cuts. And maybe that's not the most appropriate way to look at a budget over the next couple of years, I guess, is we could all just, also just come in with what is level services and say, this is level services, and this is what we actually need, because what we have right now is what we want and what we need for the kids. I don't think we have an extravagant, you know, fourteen thousand per student. That's not bad at all, actually, when you look at the area. So there's a different way to look at budgets. And I think, you know, right now, we're in a position where we, we've been looking at the budget from what the town has given us. That's one way to do it. Another way is we give them, or we talk about what we want first, and then we try to work with the town to get to a number that we can both live with. But obviously, from a negotiation point of view, what we're doing right now is the worst way to do it. Because we're just taking somebody else's number and working up from there instead of down from our number. So I want to work with the town, but I also want to make sure that we get what we need. And one thing I think we need is music.
I know it was put on here, but I don't know that I've, that any one of us here is looking to cut music.
No.
So, I mean, I can say that when I think about it, I mean, I should probably disclose, I have a fifth grader in the music program right now and a wannabe fourth grader in orchestra next year as well, that can't wait to take orchestra. But I just don't, I can't, people have come up to me asking me, "Why are you putting music on the table?" I'm like, I don't support the idea of cutting music, and I, and I value it in our education. I think it's one of the things that makes Long Meadow, Long Meadow. When I came here three years ago, was it over sixty percent of the kids in the school, in the high school were participating in the music program? I would, I came to my first music concert, because that's what we get to do on, on school committee. We come to all the school, all the music concerts. I was blown away by the music program. And then I saw the same kids that I saw up on the stage out on the soccer field, and I said to my son, "Look at that." Because when I went to school, that's not what we did. And I thought it was unbelievable. And then the soccer, the girl that I had working with me in soccer was not only music, she was also coaching, and she was working at a pediatrician's office. And I'm like, these are the kids at our school district. And I feel like, it's just phenomenal to me. And I feel like taking the music part away from it would be, at an early age, would be a detriment.
Well, since we're doing this now, I guess I will jump in.
Sorry. I didn't mean to throw it out, because I just feel like there's a lot of...
And I know the concert just let out, and that's why the hallway's full. I see Walter Gunn out there.
Y'all can come in, we don't buy you.
You know, it's, we've, three times in the last five years that I've been on this committee, and several times in the years before that, we find ourselves having the same exact conversation. And we find ourselves having the same exact conversation for a couple of reasons. And, you know, obviously, the first reason we find ourselves having that conversation is because municipal budgets are limited. And there's not a lot of ability for us to seek and actually obtain the type of money that we need to do the type of job we want to do. But that being true, and it is, we can't keep having this conversation about music. And I know we, you know, it's obviously the easiest thing to put up on the chopping block, because at the, you know, at the elementary level, it is one of those things that we can, we can, you know, we can say to ourselves, we can kind of live without this. But the truth is, we can't. We can't live without it. Because, and you heard it from Pete Thompson, you, if Mike Mucy was here tonight, you would have heard it from him, and a lot of different words from him. You know, you heard it from Caleb Wherland, you heard it from students. It's a feeder system. And, you know, the quality of the program that we have, the fact that they can do really exciting things, like go play at the, you know, the USS Arizona Memorial, and go to Carnegie Hall, and go to Earth Mass, and go across Europe and sing in cathedrals, is because we invest in them, and we invest in that program. And we have a lot of needs. We have more needs than we can afford, and we're always going to. But we can't keep doing this, because eventually, when we say that the sky's falling, the people that we need to come out and support these programs are not going to. And that's going to be a really big problem, because we're going to lose the ability to provide that type of curriculum and education to the students who really need it and the students who want it. And it goes, you know, well beyond what we're doing in third grade and fourth grade. I mean, when you look at the quality of alumni that we have, I mean, I would talk about this sometimes. I went to Mike Mucy's retirement party. And people who are actively working in the music industry, our performers, are doing something related to that, flew from across the country to be here. Like, that's the type of person we're putting out into this world. So we can't continue to do this. And, you know, obviously, any, I think it goes without saying at this point, any, any talk of cutting it is just, it's a non-starter for me. So I'll let the people who want to talk, talk now.
Sorry, Meg, I cut you.
Janet, Janet, is there any chance I could cut in too?
Sure, go ahead, and then I'll let the next speaker speak.
I'll keep it short. Okay, I'll keep it short.
Keep it shorter than me.
To help his mind as well. As well, I would like to echo what, you know, Michael, Tim, and Rush, as well as the community members that have spoken. I would not support cutting the music program. So there's, I think you just heard the four committee members just then, that don't have any intention of cutting the program.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Margaret Din, forty-one Duxbury Lane. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just have a question. I agree with what Tom had said, and I, Stephanie's letter was wonderful, and that's why I'm here. I'm more concerned about the middle school classes, class size, although I don't want music cut either. And I actually thought Stephanie's letter was very interesting about why we should have full-day kindergarten. Because honestly, I'm beyond kindergarten, and I haven't really been thinking about that. Now, my question, I'm not, I'm new to this budget stuff. Do you get penalized for asking for more money?
No.
Like, what, you said you haven't asked since 2010? You haven't had, I don't...
Superintendent was saying, I'm sorry if I didn't hear you off. School committee historically would ask to, ask town meeting to cover overages in their special education budget at town meeting. And we haven't done that, because we've been able to contain costs.
Okay, so that since 2010 was only for special education?
That was the majority of the costs that were funded. But we actually do go back to them, and we have gotten money from the town. And we've amended the budget. I mean, that one year where you saw the $263,000 increase, we actually allocated zero that year. And we, you know, a lot of people in this room came to town meeting. We had a very similar conversation about music, and we were able to, able to at least increase our budget, but it didn't come without pain. And what happened, the issue that we would run into, or we may run into, and this is not a reason for not doing it, I'm just, just so you know, is that if we were to go forward with a budget that was not approved at town meeting, and the allocation provided to us from town meeting was less than what we had approved here, we would find ourselves making cuts after the fact. So we can do it. We, it's just, we would have to really make sure that we have the votes at town meeting to do it, which I don't think anybody at this table is opposed to doing, so.
To add on to that, we do try to work collaboratively with the town.
Yeah.
Knowing that there's a finite amount of money, like Michael was alluding to earlier. You know, we can tax up to two and a half percent. There's a tax cap of $25 per thousand that we're nearing, that the town is very concerned about. But ultimately, there's, there's a set amount of money. And so to divide that up between all departments of the town, and we all live here, and we all want to, you know, continue to have the library and fire and police and streets and trash pickup and everything else. So we try to work collaboratively with them to say, okay, look, here's what our needs are. We know you've given, you've allocated X amount. Where can we work with that? To try to come up with, so going to town meeting in the spring, we have a balanced budget. By law, the town has to present the budget that we vote on and approve. If that, and like, and then that goes into what Michael was saying, that if we approve a budget that is much larger than the town's allocation, if that is not voted on and approved at town meeting, then after that date, we will then have to make cuts, because we will only be allotted that much money. So it's one of those, we can certainly go and, and ask for it. Are we guaranteed to get it? The answer's no. Is there anything else I'm missing with that, Michael?
Well, I, the only other thing I'd say is, the money, if it does get approved, the money has to come from somewhere, which, you know, is not necessarily an issue for the person who's proposing to amend the budget, to increase the allocation. But you do run into concerns that there'll be staffing cuts in other departments, which, you know, I mean, obviously, our first job is to keep our eyes on the school district and make sure that our students have enough resources, that our teachers are, you know, we're able to put teachers in classrooms. But we do rely on the police department, the fire department, you know, the work in the DPW to maintain our buildings and come when there's emergencies. And so, you know, we obviously want to make sure that they are equally as well-funded.
Right.
Or at least appropriately funded. Well-funded is, nobody's well-funded.
Right.
Appropriately funded.
Russ?
But I think that reality, though, I mean, when we looked at this chart we got earlier, if you're not consistently going to two and a half percent, even two and a half percent's really not enough to fund a budget.
Nope.
So you're going to be cutting even at two and a half in most years, because health insurance goes up, you have salary raises, you have steps, you have all the different things, contracts go up, you got heating and cooling.
Oh, pub.
So retiree costs. So we haven't been hitting that mark for a while. This year, actually, we are. The problem is, if you don't hit it every year, you end up in this situation. And so I understand we have the twenty-five per thousand issue. I think in my mind, that's going to happen.
Yep.
So whether we go two and a quarter this year, in the next four years, so we save another year or two before we hit twenty-five, we're still going to hit twenty-five.
And Russ, just to be clear, that I'm understanding you correctly, with the two and a half percent, you're talking about what the schools are being allocated from the town, not what the town is taxing? Because the town has been taxing up to the two and a half percent.
They have, but we're not getting two and a half as a department.
Correct, okay.
Now, whether the other departments have been...
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I have no idea.
And also, not to interrupt you, but this year, they're only going up two and a, two-point-two-five percent, not the full two and a half. So they're limiting the revenues that are available.
Yeah, and that, that's a strategy because of the twenty-five, which is, you know, not our purview. But I think from my perspective, if you know you're going to hit it anyway, and we spend the next four or five years struggling at two and a quarter or two, and then we hit twenty-five anyway, you know, the question is, should we just deal with the twenty-five cap through special legislation or whatever we end up doing? But there's, so there's a whole bunch of big issues that we're facing, but you're right. There's no penalty in us giving a budget that's not what was requested.
Okay, well, thank you. And I just want to go on record as saying I got scared when the, I can't remember his name, the ex-teacher from, who lives on Frank Smith Road. When he mentioned proposition two and a half, I got nightmares, being educated in Massachusetts, thinking next year, my now-sixth grader, seventh grader is going to possibly be in a classroom with twenty-eight other students. Just brings back memories, not good ones. So just like to go on record saying I love the travel team idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
He has, Ben. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, my name is Matthew Berardi, and I'm a current student at LHS. I just wanted to address what my opinion is on the music program. Being in fourth grade, I also played the violin. And it's not just going to one of those boring concerts where you hear your kid play "Oh To Joy" with squeaky two notes over and over again. It makes a difference to a kid, because me being an LHS student right now, as a junior in high school, I can tell you that from the time I started playing music, it has impacted my life in so many ways. From practicing at home, to making junior district, to this year, making senior district, it means a whole lot. And not only that, but when you start playing an instrument, it's not just going home and practicing, it's learning how to learn and learning how to play something and acquire a new skill that you might not have been able to before. You meet new people, make new friendships, go to places you've never been before. So for me, playing an instrument is so much more than just playing music. It's also learning, which is going to go back to the classroom. People who play instruments, I think, have a better learning experience inside the classroom with all the different tunes and rhythms. And you go home and you think about it, you study, you meet up with different people, you practice. It's a team building as well. It's not just going home and playing by yourself. You also have to learn other people's parts. So it's a huge skill, it's very hard to learn. And I think it's very important that each student has the opportunity to learn it. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
I'm Katie Newton at one oh-six Northfield Road. I just wanted to give a little bit of a different perspective. I am a mother of a preschooler, two preschoolers, one that's going to be entering kindergarten next year. So I don't have any kind of knowledge of all these other issues. It's been very interesting to hear about everything. But just speaking directly to the kindergarten issue, I moved to Long Meadow about two and a half years ago. Moved to Long Meadow because of the school district, everything. We heard about the wonderful school district. The year we moved was when the payment for kindergarten was put into place. And it was very surprising to my family. Come from Michigan, and full-day kindergarten is standard there, funded by the school district or the town. And I just, I just can't, I guess, say strongly enough how wonderful it would be to have universal kindergarten for all. I'm glad to hear it sounds like there, there is some support for that. And I echo what everyone has said, in that if we can present what would, you know, be ideal for the school's budget to the town, I mean, that just seems like the way to go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say, when you read our handbook that we get when we first become school committee members, the MAS C book, that big thick binder, one of the first thirty pages, it tells you your responsibility as a school committee member. And your responsibilities are to think about the children in the district as your first priority. And your responsibilities are to think about the, the children in the district as your first priority. And so, I know that we're trying to be fiscally, um...
Collaborative?
Collaborative. But I, I feel like, um, I'm, I'm, I've been waiting for this discussion with all of us so that we can think about what would be the right budget to bring forth to them. Because I feel like we need to think about what the priorities are in our district and what will be the best solution for all of our kids, K through 12. And, I don't know, I guess I look forward to that discussion.
So Janet, just like from a procedural standpoint, if there's no other questions, we would probably have to close the hearing, and then we begin our debate.
Okay. Are there any more? Oh, Nick? I'm sorry, you're doing that made me think that there was a, a presentation that was emailed to us by students. And I, I don't want to discount the work that they put into that. Would you be able to?
Sure, just a moment.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't give you advanced warning.
Oh, that's okay.
I should mention, I got an email, my personal email, from someone in town. Marsha Harbison, that was in support of the music program as well, and not cutting the music. She wanted me to mention it because she couldn't be here when we kept changing it.
Hello, um, my name is Jeffrey Schmelken. I'm a senior, um, I'm part of the music department. This is Ab-
Um, you, you got it.
I'm Abigail Glick, I'm, I'm also a senior, standing for Claire Hitt.
Yeah, I'm a pianist and composer. So, we just wanted to talk about the importance of music, especially early on. Aside from the whole musical education part of it, I know that for someone like me who didn't always fit in, the music department gave me a place to feel like home, away from home. It gave me a place where I could bond over music with other people. Gave me a place really to just feel like I had another family. I don't know if you agree. And I just remember, like, early on, um, just memories of being in the music department, starting in elementary school. It was always that place that I could go. And if I just, like, did poorly on a test, or whatever the reason, I could go to the music department. And I would always feel like I had a place where I belonged.
I definitely agree with that. And for me, I think, not only is it important early on because of, like, science and whatever, I'm not a scientist, but they definitely say that it helps developmentally to have music early on. And, but I think for the sake of music itself, it's very good to have it early on. I know that personally, I have, like, 100 siblings. And all of my older sisters do music, and I know in my church, I, there's always a lot of music. And just having music for, throughout my life, early on especially, it made me just so interested in it. It gave me such a passion for something that I think is super important in the world. And so, having, like, role models and people to look up to who use this, like, art form to express themselves, just made me so interested in it. And if, early on, I had not been exposed to it, I feel like I wouldn't really care so much. And definitely, starting to learn about it early on, like, in, like, elementary school, definitely made me able to progress so far and, like, become a really good musician here.
Yeah, adding on to that, um, music is what I want to do in my life. If I didn't have those early steps of, um, being taught early on and all the influences of looking up to people like the high schoolers in music, I don't know what I'd be doing right now. Music is my life, um, it always has been. Um, I attribute that greatly to, um, everyone who inspired me when I was younger. My music teachers, my peers who played music. It's just been such a large part of my life and Abigail's life. It's always been there for me, I'm always there for music. And I just think it's very important to start early on. Because statistics, um, show that if you, if music does not start at an early place, early time in life, um, you are less and less likely to actually pick up an instrument and start playing and make music.
I definitely think that's true. And I also think that in this town in particular, in Long Meadow, we have, especially the high school, a great legacy of the music department. And I think that starting really early on gets you really excited to be a part of that. I know that, since I've been here my whole life, that when I was a kid, I used to go to my siblings' concerts and, like, be so excited, like, that was the legendary Caleb Worland, and that was Mr. France and Mr. Music. And now Mr. I'm, it is definitely a role model for all kids. And I think that being part of this, like, illustrious community, it's, it's very exciting. And I think it makes, gives younger kids, like, such an exciting thing to look forward to and such an exciting place to, to be and belong.
Mm-hmm. Especially now that we have, um, the TRIAM music on our society. TRIAM, we are doing amazing things. We are bringing music to, um, senior homes, we are bringing music to special needs students. And I just feel like if the music department wasn't here to begin with, um, all these other great things that it's rippling from wouldn't be happening.
True, but I think that it's definitely a force in the, in the school community.
It's not just another subject.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you for your time, thank you for listening.
And thank you for considering our, uh, personal perspectives on, like, the issue.
Thank you, Nick.
Michelle got disconnected. Michelle got disconnected.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, um, with that said, as Michael had mentioned, procedurally, are there any other people who wish to voice comments or concerns from the public? If not, we'll close. Yes, ma'am, please.
You there?
Hi, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Kathy Valdez, 72 Pinewood Hills. I would just like to, everybody has said what I wanted to, to say, but as a, I've been in town 20, about 20 years, and I've had three children going through the music program. My youngest is a senior. I'd like to, um, tell the parents, younger parents of younger children. People have come up to me and they've asked me, how have you kept your kids on the straight and narrow? How have, how do you keep them successful? And I feel that when your child is small, you have small problems. When they get bigger, you have bigger problems. The music program keeps my kids, have kept, has kept my kids so busy that they don't have time to get into trouble. It also provides them, when they are stressed, it provides them with this, it's a calming thing. If you get your kid addicted to music, it's, to me, I feel like they don't need the drugs for the high. The music gives them the hype. If you saw my kids come out of one of these concerts, they're so happy. And that's just something that you might not think of for your child in the future. It's a great release, it's, it's, I can't describe it. It's just a good thing. If you get your kid addicted to music, keep them busy, um, it's a good way to raise a child. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Moore, 116 Brooks Road. And my older son, who's now a sophomore in college, studying aerospace engineering and also still playing low brass and trumpet, associated with his school, came through the music program. When he was in, was going to be in fourth grade, that was when they threatened to cut from the budget and other people stepped up and saved the program. And it's been an amazing force in his life. And from that point, I decided that I would step up and try to do the same thing because it is, for us, music is Long Meadow. This is why we're here. This is the best part of the community for our kids. Other people have kids who are involved in different things. And, and my kids have been involved in other things. But this has been the thing that has run through our lives, has changed our lives, has changed their lives, and is a huge part of their success. And I just think it's incredibly important. I'm not going to pit interests against other interests. I think that our kids need this program to stay. And stay from the earliest point, from fourth and fifth grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Tom?
Can you just clarify what's happening tomorrow?
Okay, so the, after we close the, um, budget hearing, school committee then starts their debate about the budget and what we want to vote on. Tomorrow night is the vote of what budget we as a committee are accepting, voting on, and proposing then to the town. And that is the budget that they will have to present at town floor, which, like we've talked about, may be, may not be a balanced budget. And then the debate would continue on town floor. And, and like Michael had said, is, you know, certainly we can ask for, and, and yes, we may receive, yes, we may not receive. If we do receive, then those funds are being taken from some other source from the community. If we don't receive, then we have to start making cuts to, to live within our means. But, so tomorrow evening will be, um, the vote. And I believe, Diane, is there public comment tomorrow evening?
I don't think so.
Okay. Usually not, okay. So it's, so tomorrow evening will be the, excuse me, the continued discussion about the budget and an ultimate vote on what will be presented.
That's open and televised?
It is. It will still be broadcast live, livestreamed, recorded. You know, it's certainly a public meeting, open and welcome to the public to be here. It'll just be the, um, the continuation of the discussion. Okay?
And then the vote, because we have to-
And the vote, because the budget does have to be turned into the town by Friday. That is our timeframe. So, with that answered, are there any other? I, I want to give everybody the opportunity. Any more questions, comments, please?
Melanie Rothstein, 30 Inwood Road. Um, I don't have a kindergartner, but, um, my, and I've got two that have graduated high school. I have one in middle school. So I kinda, I don't really have pushes anywhere because I don't have a kindergartner. My middle schooler's no longer in the music program. My oldest daughter played three instruments and went on pre-med, is now applying to med school. So I don't really have an axe to grind anywhere. But what, what I would say is, um, I've done a lot of research on Common Core. And my understanding is that expectations that used to be of kids in first grade are now pushed back into kindergarten. So I would just ask for you to consider that. In this very committee last, I think it was last year, said that children who didn't attend full-day kindergarten would fall behind because of the new Common Core standards. So I think when you, you know, are weighing postponing music for one year versus paying for full-day kindergarten for children in light of the, the new standards and the expectations of the kids, I would say, you know, to keep that in mind. And I think that's it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public forum, public hearing portion. Thank you all for taking your time to come and, and to speak and to share your thoughts. We, we most certainly appreciate it.
You can watch the rest of the discussion on livestream.
And so now, I will open it up to school committee for discussion and debate.
I have a random question that's kind of-
Random questions, Ken?
Kind of off the kindergarten and music for one second. In our budget, the control master, I'm looking at the school technology section. Where we have professional salaries, clerical salaries, contractual services, supplies. The total right there for FY17 proposed is $964,000 and change. Tom, I know I asked you, and I'm, I have to thank you for all of your answers this week. I asked, I asked about technology and what that provides. And it, it actually provides support to both the school and the town departments. The operation was consolidated to the school department's budget back in FY12. And so all the cost for the town and the school, software, hardware, and support are in our technology department budget. That's correct?
That is correct.
Do you know why we did that? I'm, I'm just-
Go ahead.
We're very instrumental in this.
I was, wasn't I?
Sure.
Sure. So, at the time, there was no consistent funding. So there's a couple different issues that led to this. There was a, there was no consistent mechanism for funding technology in Long Meadow. And there was two different technology departments. One was on the town side, one was on the schools. We obviously maintained a much more robust staff, and they had Victor. And only Victor. They had technology needs that they could not keep up with, they had technology needs they weren't funding, they had technology needs that the police department needed, enhanced 911 systems. All these, like, we didn't have phone systems that called from building to building. The town structurally was antiquated in terms of how we were addressing technology needs. And so, at the time, the other, the other issue was that the town, or the, the general government considered technology that we use, i.e. computers, to be a capital need. And so, the only way we were able to fund technology was through a town meeting appropriation in the capital budget. We had no computers in our budget, we weren't buying them. And so, we proposed and agreed to consolidate the town and school finance department. We absorbed Victor. And in return, we agreed to service all of their technology needs in a uniformed manner, which has done a lot of really great things for this community, namely fiber optics, which has allowed us to have a phone system that actually works between buildings and departments. We're able to support the, uh, I mean, Nick, you can talk about this all you want. We're able to support the police department and their new technology needs. We are able to have increased bandwidth. Uh, we're, you know, that's a great thing about the fiber optics. We're paying a lot less money because we're running our own network.
Is the increased bandwidth at the schools, or is it at all of the-
It's at all town buildings.
All town buildings?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it also allowed us to begin budgeting technology in our budget. Uh, because the town, their previous criteria for capital was $10,000 and a lifespan of 10 years or more. Well, computers don't really last 10 years, although, although we were making them last in Long Meadow for 10 years. And they weren't doing what we needed them to do. So, in 2000, FY12, we incorporated technology into our budget. And we began a, a five-year lease program with Apple where we were able to outfit all the teachers with, uh, most of the teachers with new laptops. We were able to upgrade technology. And then we had a huge influx of technology from the high school building project, where we were, then we were able to reallocate technology through the, uh, the lower schools. So, it's been a very successful thing. And it's been one, it's actually been great because we haven't had to have an argument about technology with the town since 2012, because they're seeing the benefits of it too.
So when we look at our tiered approach here, and one of our line items is technology support and software, $10,000.
Yeah.
That is gonna affect the town and the schools as well.
Yeah, I think if we were smart, we would just have it specifically affect the town. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
It's hard because in that budget, you know, we have software and there are maintenance or license costs every year that, you know, we're kind of obligated to pay. We can't do without munis. We have, uh, student software that we utilize, assessment and instructional. So, we built into there what the increases, uh, we believe will be based on what we've seen in previous years. So, um, it's hard to say exactly where, if we have to cut it, what specifically we would reduce.
But in a general way, like, $10,000 out of a $900,000 budget?
I mean, that's a very common question I'm getting, is, it's a large line item?
Mm-hmm.
And is there anywhere in that line item that we could cut that would make a difference in regard to these other programs that we're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we lease right now. But if you go back and look at our hardware line in the schools, right now, we have $101,000 budgeted. If you look at our historical expenditures, they're well above that number. We've had to fund it with other monies within the budget, which is why we're trying now to put it at a level which is, which is what's needed. That $100,000 only covers the lease, which is ending in FY16. Nick is working with Apple to see about what options we have. If we keep it at $100,000, what does it give us for replacement equipment? What do we get? What do we get for trade-in on the equipment that we own at the end of that lease? We most certainly could cut that money, but when we, you know, when there is need for another piece of equipment, that's not part of that lease, where do we get the money from? Where does, you know, we buy equipment on the town side if we don't increase the hardware line item? So, you know, again, we were faced with difficult decisions, which unfortunately, why some of the things are in your packet in the presentation you have tonight. You know, we can make cuts in various places throughout this budget, but the impacts are going to be felt somewhere. And so again, we tried to do, we tried to do what we felt was the least harmful to the education throughout the entire district and support all the needs of, you know, not just the classroom and instruction, but to make it happen. So, I, I mean, again, we will certainly will do what you direct us to, but we try to be mindful as, and thoughtful as much as we can when putting together this information.
Thanks.
So the total cost, if we wanted to do everything we needed to do, would be a four hundred thousand dollar increase above the current budget in front of us, right? Roughly?
So which, which one of these numbers?
You know, I'd like you to be more specific than using these round numbers, so.
So if we were to do, if we were to go forward and there were no cuts, and excuse me if these questions were asked last time, but I was on a red eye.
No, 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 it's, so you're asking.
If we were to say, we're not going to cut anything, we're going to fund full day kindergarten fully, we're going to make sure we keep our fourth and fifth grade music, we're looking at about one point two million dollars, correct? And right now, we have about eight hundred and or so thousand. I know you hate round numbers.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little higher than that. Right now, with, with the middle school reduction.
Right.
Which is about two hundred thousand, you know, we're asking for a million eighty-five thousand. So you would have to add at least another two hundred thousand onto that.
Okay.
So you're at just under one point three million.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, round numbers, and if you're just speaking to no cuts, and putting the middle school team back, which is what I'm, I'm assuming you're asking me.
I am.
Then it'd be about one point three million.
And right now, we've been given, how much by the town? Eight hundred?
Again, that was, that was the number that was part of the preliminary budget projection that the town presented back in October.
But that's also been the number, when we've had meetings with town officials, that's still been the number that's being given to us.
Correct. And based on our.
So that's why.
Based on our meeting on Monday, including the general fund request of a million eighty-five thousand, that would leave the town's total budget, including the school's request, at a million eighty-five, at about five hundred and thirty-four thousand. So there would still be a deficit townwide to fund us at the million eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
Which, a hundred of, a hundred thousand they'll get back the following year in, uh, chapter seventy, if we had free full day kindergarten.
There would be an increase in chapter seventy money in FY eighteen, correct?
Russ?
Yeah, so in our joint meeting, we pointed this out, and I think a couple of the board of select members pointed it out too, but the, the deficit is really, most of that money is actually increased savings towards capital, OPEB.
Policy initiatives.
Yeah, and deciding to go two and quarter instead of two and a half. So if you didn't do all those things, my guess is the deficit is virtually gone.
Yeah, I mean, I think those three numbers is, the three initiatives is about three hundred and seventy thousand, I'm guessing was my recollection.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
But it's about that number.
So it really goes back to what I was saying before about, you know, I, I work with a lot of schools, and the reality is every time I see a school that's not funding at two and a half, then they have problems. Prop two and a half caused a whole bunch of problems in the state. So that's why people remember Prop two and a half when it first happened, because everybody was funding above two and a half every single year. You can get to two and a half, it's not easy.
Right.
And you're probably going to cut, you know, in many years. But when you're below two and a half, then you're definitely cutting. You know, I mean, it's just inevitable, really, because if you look at cost, everything is going up more than two and a half.
Right.
So I think that fundamentally is a big problem we face really as a town, not just us, as a school committee.
And to give you the numbers, Russ, I'm sorry, I was just looking back to our prior meetings. A hundred and ten thousand is for, is on the table from not taxing to two and a half. A hundred twenty-two thousand is the increase in OPEB.
Hundred and twenty?
Two.
Okay.
And a hundred.
And that's, just to make it clear too, that's above what they already saved towards OPEB. That's increased above what they're already doing.
And the increase to capital was one forty-seven thousand.
And of that, of those capital dollars, what are we, do we know what's being funded yet? Is capital brought forward, the recommendations of ours?
No.
No, I think there was a meeting last night.
Okay.
But I don't know. They've settled on there, it was the recommendation.
And so. Sound like the playground?
So the, what was reported to us on Monday was that, including free full day kindergarten, the town deficit is five thirty-four.
That's if we're pulling another hundred thousand out of.
No.
Okay.
No. Just.
And Janet, what was the fir, before you, before you read the OPEB number, what was the first one you read? I was trying to get my.
Hundred and ten thousand?
The hundred and ten thousand that's being left on the table because we're not taxing to two and a half.
Okay, so that's the, that's the levy capacity.
Right, that's the levy cap. Right. And so what, what they have said is that with the monies that we're asking for free full day kindergarten, the total deficit to the town is five hundred thirty-four thousand going into the budget. Now, let me be clear, on Monday, when we had our discussion, that was using the budget that was presented a week ago Monday, which is making the assumption of the elimination of a middle school team. That was not, including that extra two hundred whatever thousand, I know you don't like round numbers, but that extra fund in there, so.
So, so can I just follow up on my original thought, though? So I guess what I'm saying is that's a, a deficit, but you're not cutting people. In our situation, forgetting kindergarten completely, we're cutting people. So we have a deficit.
Not according to their report. They still said that they are, they're not funding certain positions within fire and police.
That already exists?
Yes.
Okay, so they're making a decision on their side as far as.
Right, that they, they're saying that they have made.
But let's, out of that five hundred and something, which I, I, I'm not sure, that was back when we were predicting no money from the state, basically, from what I recall. Now we know we're getting the best amount, you know, more money than we've gotten in five or ten years. So, not that it's a lot for Long Meadow, because it's still only like a hundred and something thousand dollars. But still, things have gotten better since then, but the number is basically the same that we're getting from the town as far as the total deficit, and it still is, three hundred and eighty out of five hundred is coming from increased savings. So maybe they're cutting a hundred grand, but we're cutting hundreds of thousands on our side in staffing. So, and it's the music program, and it's Williams, and so I would say that we have an actual deficit, and we're cutting, and we're not level services, where the town side, you know, at least from a bird's eye view, doesn't look nearly as bad. If you're over there, you know, now, I'm not disagreeing with their policy decisions, because I think it makes sense to, to save more.
Sure.
The problem is, are you saving more when we're cutting staff that already exists? Notwithstanding kindergarten. Kindergarten's kind of this thing that's out there that is very important, but even if we take that off the table for this discussion, we're still cutting a lot of staffing.
Right, because ultimately, the cost of the middle school team is almost equivalent to the cost of full day kindergarten.
Yeah, plus we have Blueberry, and we have Center, and we're cutting special ed positions. So, you know, that total number is a large number. We're talking almost a half million dollars in staffing without kindergarten.
Right. So let's say, just for fun, that we go back to the select board and we say, we want you, you know, you, you really need to go up to the two and a half, you need to come up with that extra hundred and ten thousand. You shouldn't fund OPEB any higher than you have been previously, so that hundred twenty-two is back in play. And capital's great, but give us the hundred forty-four thousand. That still leaves us needing a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
If we put that travel team back in, is that the two hundred and nineteen thousand?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, there's some cost, but you could reduce the foreign language, which was about twenty-six thousand. So it's like a net of one ninety-five.
Okay.
ish.
And I don't know that we need everything either. I mean, I think we have to compromise the town. I'm not trying.
Yeah.
I'm sure I don't sound like that at all right now, but the, like, Blueberry, there's a cut there that looks like it's just straight enrollment. You know, we can lose one staff member there, which is unfortunate, you hate to lose anybody, but that one looks pretty clear. Center, I'm going to ask more questions about kindergarten, but, so we have, there's money in the budget, and then they have a hundred and two thousand that they, you know, talked to all of you about as far as other ways to save some money. So I think we need to look at all those things. I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Right, and just to be clear, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but the hundred and two thousand of, of offsets are one-time offsets. So it's not recurring funding, it's not, it would, it's the equivalence of free cash. So it's, you're using one-time funds for. In essence, recurring expenses that are currently in the budget. It's not that we're saying we're taking those funds and, and redoing a floor at Williams. It's.
And one of them's a utility. Right, fifty thousand of that is a utility, which you have no control over.
It's roughly what we're going to get the following year. So, I mean, we used a hundred and twenty-five kids, but from the projections we looked at in the past, well.
There's never.
Actual, we always had a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty, so.
Right.
We're being very conservative there, so.
Right, but I just wanted to make it clear to the committee is that with those, with those that were brought forward on Monday, is those are, in essence, are free cash. You know, if you want to compare that to the town. So when we keep saying with the town, we know using free cash, one-time funds for recurrent expenses is not good business practice, that's in essence what this hundred and two thousand in offsets is.
The other thing I think we should point out is kindergarten's three fifty, not two seventy-seven. So we already cut to get to that number in the first place. I mean, that's how we got to two seventy-seven. So we're working from that number, but it goes to what I said before, as far as negotiation strategy.
Full day kindergarten is three fif, is not two seventy-seven. Full day kindergarten is three fifty.
There's thirty thousand of that three fifty, which is indirect cost. So that would be shifted to the town's benefit section. So then that would be three twenty. So to Russ's point, we've cut fifty at least off of the cost of what it would be.
Okay.
If we charge, they're going to charge us back that indirect expense. So if we have a tuition of any sort, they're still going to want that fund to pay a portion of the employee benefits that would otherwise be picked up by the general fund.
And is that three fifty number based on your hundred and twenty-five student enrollment?
Uh, no, that number's based on what we're, this year's budget, which is, again, and that number's really going to be dictated by what you charge for a tuition. The total kindergarten district-wide is about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars without supplies, because some of that's buried in the school's discretionary money. But total program cost for staffing is about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So it looks to me that, from the data, and I think Stephanie Jasmine said this earlier with Collins' report, but just quickly looking through this that we, you know, got tonight, it's, it looks to me that the time to do Williams, if we're going to do it, would be two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So basically, three years from Collins' original discussion last year. That's, just based on the enrollment figures, it looks like that's an easier time to do it. And my concern with the middle school is not, you know, we probably do need to look at the team traveling, because it is, the numbers just aren't looking equitable between the two schools at the moment. But if we, if we cut Williams, the team at Williams, right now, I think the next couple of years, there's a question about, so the average is twenty-five, but then you might have kids, you know, twenty-nine. And so it's not so much the average in my mind, it's what's the worst-case scenario, and can we live with that? I think in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, if the average is twenty-one, and it goes up to twenty-five, twenty-six, not great, but we could probably live with it if we had to, if that's the worst-case scenario. I'm a little worried right now, because I think if we do it now, we'll never get it back, based on, you know, all the situation we have in this town right now, with, you know, if we're going to hit twenty-five per thousand in, in four or five years, depending how physically responsible we are, that's, I can't see hiring back four teachers all at once. And so I'm, I'm worried about that. Same thing with Center kindergarten, I'm worried that if we, if we lose it, and then we need it, and we're using all this one-time money that we won't have now, we won't be able to do what we've done in the past and hire somebody back over the summer. So those are my, I have some real concerns about cutting staff when enrollment is as tight as it's shown here.
The Center kindergarten is just if we go to full day, correct?
Correct.
It would be a half-day, because we would no longer have the half-day program.
But it's also because enrollment is predicted as, I can't remember, it's fourteen less kids. And my concern is if we don't have fourteen less kids, if we have fifteen, we have the same number we have this year, next year. That's five more kids for each one of those classes at Center. And that's, we're predicting fifteen and fourteen. So then you're up to nineteen and eighteen in each one of those classes, which we don't typically do in kindergarten.
We do.
We have it too. Teacher and adult. Twenty is.
But everybody else is fifteen. I mean, we'd only be doing it at Center.
But we do a ratio of one, one adult to ten students.
Well, if you look at, Blueberry's at eighteen and nineteen right now.
Right.
I think they're.
And then they add, what they do is they add in a, they add in a, an extra, I don't, they're not a para aide.
Aide. They're an aide, they're a classroom aide.
Yeah, but like, the teacher and the aide work together.
Right.
Almost as one, and they've worked together for years.
I mean, the unfortunate thing, though, is all the other schools next year are going to be fifteen and sixteen, or fourteen.
But that's not a guarantee based on move-in.
We know that number's going to change. There's no way that these, these classes are going to be fourteen and fifteen next year.
I mean, that's where they normally start out at this time of year with enrollment just starting. Is that not true historically?
But we just redistricted to Center. So it's fifty-nine this year, to say it's going to be forty-four next year is just, I mean, I think what's going to happen is now Center is going to have the bubble class instead of the other two. I mean, based on these numbers. I mean, I could be wrong, but I'm just saying, we might end up there in the summer.
Well, I, I question the numbers anyway, just a little bit, not, they, because.
The kindergarten numbers.
Well, not just kindergarten, because when you look at, I, I'm looking at every class. All we did was take FY sixteen at Blueberry second grade, there's, can't read it, it's ninety-three. So then we went to FY seventeen, third grade, ninety-three. How do we know we're not going to get three third, third graders that move in next year? I mean.
You don't.
You don't.
I mean, I'm looking at the third grade this year that has a class of twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-two. Is that still, do they still have twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-two? And so next year, fourth grade, is going to be twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-two. Twenty-three's our cap. So if we have more than two kids that move into the Blueberry district that are in fourth grade, we're going to be adding another teacher.
I don't know that we have a cap of twenty-three.
We've tried to make that the number where we look at adding a teacher in the summer.
That's what we, and I, and, you know, while we're doing all of this, and talking about the middle school and all of this, I, as a school committee, I feel like we need to think about what, I think Jess said it, what are our priorities? Is, is class size one of our priorities? And if it is, then we're going to need to keep looking at this, because, I, I mean, we did not project any of these classes going up. There's, there's no.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, is we have to determine what our priorities are. The fact is, there's a finite amount of money.
Right.
Whether we, whether we accept the eight oh eight, or whether we ask for more, and whether that's accepted or rejected, ultimately, there's a finite amount of money. We're talking about elementary class sizes, we're talking about middle school class sizes, we're talking about free full day kindergarten. You know, that's not taking into any account any of the other cuts or reductions that, that have even been presented. So with that, we've got to decide, is it enrollment, or is it kindergarten at no charge? I mean, that's ultimately.
Well, I think we have to think about what, it, it's important to us as a school committee for kindergarten to be, full day kindergarten, to be a universal. full-day kindergarten to be a universal thing in Long Meadow. And I think that we've made it very clear over the last year that we, we do think that it is. And we knew that we couldn't think about it last year, because we knew we had contract negotiations going on. We've always said, in the two and a half years that I've been on here, that, that when we started that kindergarten committee, kindergarten, full-day kindergarten is important to us as a district, and we, and so we couldn't do it last year, we need to think about it now. And so there's no harm in us going to the, to the town meeting, or to the, to the town and asking, say, this is a priority, we, they know it's a priority, we've told them. We need to figure out how to work together and fund this, and if we can't work together, then we're gonna have to go to town meeting and ask for it.
Well, and, yes.
And I don't say things in a nice way, I'm sorry.
No, yes.
We need to, we need to ask for it.
And I guess the, the thing about going to town meeting and, or not going to town meeting, but bringing forward something like, let's say it is full-day kindergarten, right? If it doesn't pass at town meeting, we find ourselves in the position we're in today, which is, we charge for free, we charge for full-day kindergarten, and.
Then we go to tier three.
And then we go to tier three, and.
But remember, tier three was without keeping the middle school team.
Right. So the question is, I guess the question that I have is, and it's to the board, is do we have to look at our asks as two separate things? Is there the one ask that is, we wanna make sure that we keep the team in there, we wanna make sure we keep middle school music in there? And so that's amount number one, that's the increase we are asking ourselves for. And then ask number two is, and then we really want this two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in addition for full-day kindergarten. And if we have to go to town meeting for that, and we have to put it to people on the floor, and we lose, at least we're not in a position where we're having to make significant reductions to staff. If we're able to get piece number one of that, which is, you know, whatever, what is the cost of keeping the middle school team?
Two twenty.
Two twenty?
No, it's just under two hundred, 'cause he said we'd reduce that.
All right, so if we're able to negotiate that sort of increase, I think that's a good, that's a good sort of like step number one. And then step number two is, we kind of put ourselves in a position where we, we have a value statement, which is an important value for us, and we hope we're able to succeed in getting that. But at the very least, you know, we really push the dialogue forward, which in tight fiscal circumstances, may not be sufficient to those people seeking a free full-day kindergarten. But it is an important step forward for us, because it would be the first time that we've, as a committee, said, we really want this, and we're gonna go forward and advocate for it.
Okay, let me be devil's advocate.
I'm just, and I'm in my head, so I'm like rattling it off, you know?
So if, and I understand what you're saying, and if, that seems like a logical approach. So if we need the two hundred, or two hundred thousand for keeping the middle school team, are, are we as a committee willing to accept the hundred and two thousand in offsets? In order to do so, to meet the town halfway, to fund that? Or are we saying that, so we're using one-time money to fund that for this year, and looking to the town for the other half?
So these hundred and two changes, these were what you guys came up with in that meeting with the town manager?
I don't know that I'd say we came up with, but it was discussed.
Okay, well, I'm trying to be nice.
I am too.
They were recommendations from the town.
They had others too. We negotiated.
We negotiated it down.
And felt like we could live with these.
So these are what, okay, so you've got fifty thousand in natural gas reduction, which the town has agreed to support any deficits?
In the meeting, they said they would.
Yes.
So we're taking twenty-two thousand out of our circuit breaker fund balance, which is about three hundred thousand right now?
Yeah, it would be money that's available this year if we were to have a deficit, but we'll carry it forward. So we'll increase the appropriation for circuit breaker next year by twenty-two thousand.
And then building rental, what is in that right now?
It was about sixty thousand.
And what do we typically pay for with that?
We, we use summer employee, the custodial help that we hired to do both the cleaning and maintenance painting during the summertime.
So maintenance, painting the walls and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's been about twenty-two thousand or so in the last couple of years, we've appropriated to, uh, to that cost.
And is that something the town typically would pay for, but they're not able to fund?
No. Hmm, we've always used some of the money, the revenue from building rental to, uh, help with the cleaning. I mean, it's, really goes back to the maintenance of the buildings, that's what the fee is for, for the rental to offset the cost in maintaining the buildings.
Cost of maintaining the buildings. And then the preschool fund, ten thousand?
So the preschool fund is, yeah, from charging the tuition, um, we have a residual balance in that fund of ten thousand dollars that we would basically utilize.
I think that's a good approach. I actually think what we probably should do is start with the things we are willing to cut. So if that's one of them, one area, and then we look at, you know, maybe it is, if Blueberry, we can cut a staff member over there because of enrollment. Or some of the other items with, I don't know, PD or materials or whatever. We figure out as much as we can cut, um, or live with, and then we figure out what's left, what we need. And then we gotta decide at that point, what, how are we gonna present it to the town, as Michael said.
Well, that's, when I look at this, when I, I came in here today because I hadn't, I, I didn't realize we had such an in-depth conversation, and we're gonna have these next blue style slides. But we didn't either.
Well, trust me.
No, I, a lot happens between those budget meetings.
Oh, yes.
But I came in here saying, we, we need to keep the music program, we need to have universal full-day kindergarten. I was, I knew we'd need another, I, I was, still needed to hear more conversation about the middle school team. But I was looking at that two seventy-seven number, and I was thinking, if we look at some of these budget reductions, the library aide at twenty thousand, the professional development at fifteen, the technology and support at ten, the admin at seven, so I'm looking at another fifty thousand dollars roughly, that we could take away from the two seventy-seven, which brings it down to two twenty-seven. Now we've got, and then, now we've got another hundred thousand, so let's bring that down to.
One seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven.
Which is, by the way, basically exactly half of what it actually costs, three fifty.
So now we've got one seventy-seven, and I'm gonna add the two hundred thousand in for the middle school. So now we've got three seventy-seven right now that we'd be going to the town for, which a hundred thousand of them, they're gonna, a hundred thousand they would be getting back in the prior year. So they could technically take it from their free cash, or was it, not free cash, is it free cash? So now we're at two seventy-seven? So now we would be basically asking the town for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand to have services the way they are. The only thing new that we would be adding is the universal kindergarten, which we're going to be the last town in the state to provide at this rate. But is a health curriculum at twenty-four thousand dollars. We're, we don't add anything new into our district, ever. It's, I mean, I don't, I've only been here three years, but it doesn't seem that we have added anything new. We need a social-emotional curriculum. We're asking the PTOs to fund that. We've added, we've asked the PTOs to fund technology equipment. We, it just, to me, it makes sense to go back to the town and ask them for the things that we need to keep the schools at the level that they're at. And if it's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, I think that's what we have to do.
Janet, can I get on deck here too?
Sure. Go ahead.
I can't raise my hand visually.
No, no problem, go ahead.
Whenever, whenever Tim's finished, I just wanted to tighten a little bit.
All done, your turn.
Okay, thanks. So I, I took the backpack a little bit, I think it's been said a few times. I think when I first got this budget presentation, and I was looking over it, you know, on my own, I thought to myself, how, how is this possible? How can we, you know, without funding full-day kindergarten, we got out of there, how come we can't still have the same level of services that we have always had? And I think somehow it was the rise of the fact that we're all of a sudden in a tough situation, because we haven't gotten what we've needed for, you know, a few years going to maintain the same level of services and it's caught up to us. So I think, I don't know, I'm looking at it like everything bombarded or something this year, but I got off subject. But I think what I've realized after trying to crunch all these numbers myself, is that, you know, and it's been said again by the audience and by Tim, I guess it was in our handbook, but I really think right now, we have to sit here and focus on what our role is, and that's to advocate for the kids, to meet their educational needs. And I think, you know, it's been said again, I, I think that it's in their best interest to maintain the middle school, at least to not raise the class sizes at a level that would become such that we haven't had, you know, in previous years. Or, I think it's risky to cut full teams, and I feel like I need to advocate for that, to say that I'm not comfortable this year taking out that team. I think the, the travel team that's been suggested makes sense, that's kind of a transitional way to, to cut down staff, or to balance out, you know, is that Glenbrook in with what it, what's at Williams. I am also concerned about the cut to, you know, looking at the elementary projections or the elementary class sizes, it looks like, you know, between the three schools, we have one, two, three, four, and five, if you can count, there are maybe five classes that are sort of on the bubble. You know, looking at, um, Blueberry has a current, you know, the next year's Blueberry class of second grade, the third grade, or the fourth grade. You know, we have, I think, across the three schools, we have one, two, three, four, five that are at twenty or above. So that I would say will be on that watch list, and especially with the kindergarten, watching what's happened in the past, we could be at that point. So I'm uncomfortable with the budget, and we've got so tight, we'll riddle one anywhere, because we've really gotten down to the bare bones, and even the hundred and two thousand dollars that, you know, just happened the other day. I'm concerned about making all those cuts, I feel like it could lead us in a crisis, or we'd have to end up really increasing class sizes in ways that we and Long Meadow have tried not to do, because it's been said by the community and by the members. Tonight, that, that's one of the selling points of Long Meadow's schools, is our lower class sizes. So, you know, if we move away from that, I think that we're really chancing what we've done so well, can't be taking that away. Especially looking at the middle schools, we've talked about the physical conditions of the buildings. If we go and raise class sizes at Williams, where we know we have physical, you know, the building is aged, if we go and drastically increase those class sizes then in one year, that could tax the staff, the students, and the building, the classrooms. You know, I know there's been a correlation from a long time ago, and you got that many more kids into a classroom, and you could affect them. So I just wanted to get that out there. I think it's been, I don't know, a couple of people have said it tonight, but I really am in favor of coming up with what we think is what the best for the kids, and then presenting that to the town, through the board, and just saying, this is what we feel they need. They can't vote, I think John said that at one point. So we have to stand here and be strong for them. And I think while our focus has to be on the fact that funds are tight everywhere, and, you know, and there's not an unlimited money tree, we also have to focus on what our role here is, and that's to pay attention to that and to know that, but to advocate for the kids and what they truly need. So I'd like to ask committee, the committee to really focus on that while we're talking, and what the kids need. Because that's, you know, we also have compartmentalized rules, and that's what the board has to work with the town, and they could pay attention to that, but we really are focused on looking at what the kids need.
And just to piggyback off of that, Michelle, I, I agree with you that we have to look at what, what everyone needs. And I, I've been hearing and I've been listening to everybody about Williams Middle School, and I, I understand the concern. But I also feel that I would be remiss if I didn't speak to the fact that Glenbrook, for the past three years, have had classes of twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-eight, you know, and I, I'm not, Glenbrook is in the same, you know, physical condition that Williams is. It's open, well, it's, it's different, but it's the same in terms of, you know, degrading or older conditions. But Glenbrook has.
They have different physical problems.
Thank you, thank you for. Thank you for clarifying what I'm trying to say. But you know, it's, it's also the fact that.
Smaller classes at, at Williams, being a physical issue, because I think those classrooms are smaller and they're not open. And we know their ventilation systems are from, you know, very long ago. So if you go and change that all of a sudden, and you put a lot more change than those classrooms are used to, all at once, that could be a risk. I don't disagree with you that Glenbrook has had higher class sizes than they probably should have. So the idea of the traveling team.
I was just gonna say, is it travel?
But on the flip side, you know, sure, Glenbrook has open classrooms, but they have no air conditioning. So you've got twenty-eight kids in a classroom with no air conditioning, as opposed to Williams, who has. I mean, you know, those, you're right, the, the building issues, the physical plant issues are present for both, but they're different from both. But I, I just wanted to point out, in all fairness, that, you know, members of the, community members of this board are talking, oh my gosh, what's gonna happen if we have class sizes of twenty-five or twenty-six? Or, oh my gosh, it might go to twenty-seven. Well, the fact is, Glenbrook has been having class sizes of those. My children were in class sizes of those, with those class sizes. And our teachers are phenomenal, and they, is it the ideal world? No, you know, in an ideal utopian world, I'm sure we'd all like, you know, to have class sizes in, in the low teens. But that's not realistic, and the fact is, I, I just don't want it to get lost in this whole conversation that, oh my gosh, we have a class-sized problem at Williams, when for years we've had the same issues at Glenbrook, and nobody's brought those up, either by admin or by the community, that that's an issue that needs to be addressed. Russ?
Yeah, and I think that's why the team that travels between the two is probably, if we keep that team, that's probably the way we need to do it. I would point out, though, that Principal Collins came last year, it looks to me like this probably should have been recommended last year. So I don't know.
Yeah, he had very different numbers for Glenbrook and Williams.
But you're correct, Glenbrook was twenty-six, and Williams was sixteen, seventeen. And we did that last year, we had a presentation, or you did, it didn't come up, probably should have, but it didn't, but now it is, so we can deal with it now.
But I think the focus of his presentation was a different focus.
It was enrollment and redistricting, which is what I would have done if the class sizes are off.
And I did email that, hold it out of our Google site, so his thing that him and Nicole, the document him and Nicole presented, I did email to everybody.
I saw it.
About an hour ago.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, that's been true for a while, and it did get addressed, and it didn't get raised as a fix. Now it's being raised as a fix, and I think it's probably a good one. My only point is that, that's been true for a while, as you pointed out, we didn't use that fix.
Well, they, I mean, last, in this presentation, they're talking about an average class size at Glenbrook in grade seven, from twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, average class size twenty-two. Will, average size, class size, correct, grade eight, eighteen.
Which year are you looking at?
Right, and.
I'm looking at the presentation Michael just sent over.
And you're absolutely right, is when you average it, but like Marie was explaining before, that based on the math placements, because it's leveled, your classes, and that's why, um, the other presentation that she had given, is your class size average is twenty-two, but the class size ranges from sixteen to twenty-eight, or eighteen to twenty-five. So I mean, that's where that disparity is coming in. Sure, if you just look at the numbers and say, oh gosh, average class size is twenty-two, you know, which in Monday's presentation, when talking about eliminating the team, it was talked about that class size would be twenty-four, I think. I can't find it right quickly, but it was, it was that. But then when you delve into how it actually breaks down because of. how it actually breaks down because of the differentiated learning in math, that skews those numbers.
And it didn't go, I mean, last year's presentation didn't go into that depth, that type of depth. But it does look like it wasn't really equitable.
And we should-
If we eliminate the team, it may go the other way. If we split the team, we're as close as possible to equitable. It's still not perfect. So.
So, this travel team that we're looking at in this presentation, is this not happening right now?
It's not happening right now. It was a travel team a few years ago, and then based on enrollment, it was moved to Williams, so that they had the full team.
And so now, based on enrollment, there's a possibility that it could switch back to being a shared team, and the student teacher ratio could stay at a more even rate at both the schools?
Correct.
So we're looking at nine-
I think we should be thinking about that. More of a compromise.
Yeah.
And that would-
Right, and just to be clear, Janet, that's, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear that I was advocating to keep the team, have that team travel, because I think that's a good suggestion.
Right, no, I understood that, thank you.
And with this travel team-
With Glenbrook.
Right.
And is this in a, proposing them have, be in four sections like they were originally before? With these class size, these-
I can go back and talk to about five, but I do know it came down to the time it took, talking to students after class, getting the materials together, and four was agreed upon.
But no, the class sizes, I'm just making sure that's four. I mean, I think we should be looking at that, which would mean we're adding another-
Two hundred.
Two hundred minus twenty-three.
Well, what, two nineteen minus twenty-three?
I mean, two nineteen minus twenty-three.
So.
Just use the round number, two hundred, it gets Tom all excited there.
Stop what the new budget would look like, because this is including the travel team in it, and the kindergarten.
So we'd be looking at a total request of nine sixty-four.
Well, that budget implication was, that one, the budget implications of adding a travel team, that slide?
Yeah, nine sixty-four.
That's if we charge tuition for kindergarten.
So we have the tuition back in.
We put the tuition back in of two thousand, right, Tom?
Oh, I thought it said free, it, there's a full day kindergarten on it.
It says it up here, but then it's taken out down here.
Oh.
It's taken out down on the right.
All right, so we start with that number, and then we add in the two hundred and fifty back?
Yep.
So we take the hundred, and, does that include the hundred and two? Or no, it doesn't?
No, so we have to add three fifty-two to the nine twenty-four, nine sixty-four, right, Tom?
So we're looking at eight oh eight, eight thirty-two.
Stop.
Oh no, wait a minute, what?
Well, I think before we get into that, what we really have to do is figure out what we're willing to cut, and then have Tom run a number.
Thank you.
Because otherwise, he's gonna, you know, we could have him running ten different numbers. But I think the direction you were going before is a good one, which is we kind of walk through tier one, tier two, tier three. There are things like postage, there's, I mean, I think you have to think about the health, because even though I would love to have it-
So basically cobble together a different tier from the things we're willing to cut out of each one of them.
So here to-
Yeah. I mean, I think that's-
Okay.
I mean, I'll, so something like health that we don't already have, it's only twenty-five thousand, but we gotta add as much as we can, because the thing is, you can't just say, well, we want everything we want because we want it. I mean, we have to figure out what we can cut. And health is something we don't have now, it's important, but so are these other things, and we already have them, like music and the team at Williams, so.
Well, and with that argument, the town could say, well, you don't have free full day kindergarten. I know it's a different discussion, but-
At one point, we will have to have it, so we don't have to have health.
I don't disagree.
I mean, kindergarten comes down to what I said before, I think, which is, is it public education or not? If it's not, then that's fine, we're charging. If it is, if we believe it is, then we shouldn't be charging. And maybe we can't do it all this year, I don't know. But at the end of the day, that really is the question. I mean, it's not, I don't see it as, you know, health is a part of public education. The question is, is kindergarten actually public education? You know, is this something that we expect all our kids to be able to go to? And if it is, there shouldn't be a tuition tied to it.
And I'd just like to say that, you know, I understand what you guys are proposing about, you know, picking and choosing from the tiered reductions. You know, I just wanna state that, you know, the admin team worked really hard on trying to come up with combinations in these, and I don't know that they're-
Well, they're here, so, and I think they probably don't want to say too late, and if any questions are called, clarify questions on that, if you're gonna-
But I think that, right.
What I just said, Janet, is that the premise of this is, you know, obviously, these numbers were all aimed at getting to a certain amount. I think the premise of this sort of exercise is, what can we collectively say we can cut? And then what are we gonna go back and ask for?
I understand that premise, but then I would ask the admin team to weigh in on, out of those, if you're picking and choosing, what would you pick to add back in, and what would you not? You know, if you had to take all of those, because yes, I know that we're responsible for the budget, but I also am not an educator, and I rely on your expertise, and I know you've put a lot of time and effort into the cuts that you chose, so with going with that frame of what are we willing to give up and what are we not, out, and picking and choosing out of these, I would ask for weigh-in from admin.
Well, I was gonna, one of my questions was for the elementary principals about the health education, the whole, the new health curriculum. My other question was gonna be for the high school library aide, how comfortably you felt with that reduction? Because I understand we have a librarian in there as well, and we are-
Come on up and speak, Tom, because-
I don't know who wants to go first?
Yeah, well, just go down the line. I mean, I think that that would be most logical, if that's where we're talking.
Sorry.
I know it's not public, this is public. ... The reality that we had to cut, I looked for options that would least affect direct instruction of students. We have as many as eighty students in the library at any given time. That position is important, as all the positions that we're talking about are important. It's the hub of our technology, their independent student use of technology. So, yes, we have a librarian, Lori Robbins, she does a great job, she does a lot of teaching in the lab, but when we have eighty students, we, it's great to pass out technology, make sure that it's safe and secure and being returned, helping redirecting students. It is important. I know everything we're talking about here tonight is important. But when we're looking at the reality of having to cut, I identified that because it will not affect class size, and that's, that was my thinking.
How about the teacher? I know you probably don't want to say the specific one-
No, sure. If there's a teacher cut, it's gonna affect programs and courses.
So it's probably, it's an elective, probably, there's-
Um, if I go, if I went in PE, we would lose the new courses that we added in women's and men's health, and the individual lifetime fitness. If I went in art, we would lose courses. We would go through, when I started in LHS, ten and a half years ago, we had four art teachers, we now have three. We would lose courses if it was art, we would, if it's in business, we would lose, business is a department that really helps us to meet our six academic courses that we promised you, and we promised Niasq, that we would meet excluding PE, so we have minimum six academic classes plus PE. We wouldn't be able to do that if it came out of business.
So it sounds like there's kind of an obvious choice between the two.
I mean, wherever, right, wherever it comes from, it will have an impact. And of course, if it comes out of world language, if it comes out of Latin, it's the end of our Latin program, because we have two Latin teachers, so we would use that other Latin teacher to protect the students in the pipeline. If it came out of, it can't come out of Spanish, because our numbers are so high anyway. If it came out of French, because of the preps and that, we would be able to teach less French courses, so we wouldn't be able to do maybe the French four, French five, things like that. So anything will have an impact. We hope it doesn't get to that, but-
The library aide obviously has a lesser impact of the two.
That's why it was first on my list.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think that takes you up the hot seat.
Okay, thanks. Principal Ry is gonna have a real-
Yeah. Taylor, are you feeling, um-
About the, you wanna ask him about the media specialist or the shared literacy?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I was just going down the list of-
And the media specialist is new. That's something we're looking to add.
And if we were to cut the media specialist, we would probably have to add back in the library assistants at the middle school?
So currently, we have two library assistants between Glenbrook and Williams, and they do a fantastic job, but with the new BYOD program potentially rolling into the entire middle school, we need somebody that can incorporate the research aspect, the library aspect. The high school librarian, she does a fantastic job, she's really bringing you into the 21st century, and that's something Nicole and I definitely want, would like with the media specialist position. And we felt that that would be a great addition to the middle schools while incorporating the BYOD, and supporting the teachers.
So that's fifty-two thousand, but we're eliminating the two middle school library assistants.
So they're both, I believe, twenty thousand each?
Yeah, it was a one for one, well, cost-wise.
Yes.
Two for one. It was a break.
Almost a wash.
Exactly, and they wanted to add this service, and were willing to cut the aides to provide the increased capacity of the research and so on.
So that's not something we should even consider, really, because it's, it seems to make sense educationally, and it's a wash, so.
When you have on this list to reduce the media specialist, you're not adding back in the library assistants in the budget.
That was not the case, correct.
So then there would be nothing in the middle school.
There'd be nobody in the library.
And that would have the minimum impact on the students, because we don't have that position yet. Really, it's something we want and we love, but it's not there, so that's why we looked at that as the cut.
What about the literacy specialist? You currently each have one, and now it would be a shared position, is that what the cut is projecting?
That's why it's a, at the highest tier. It's something that we can work with, but we feel that having a literacy specialist in both middle schools, even though it's been, my understanding, this is the second year they've had it, I can see the results in the students just walking into the classroom. Also, with the results that we have from iReady and the various diagnostic tools that we use, we are seeing positive results with the literacy specialist.
All right, so I've gotta ask, because I've heard you advocate for both of them, and maybe I'm missing something, because I heard you say, Russ, about the importance of the media specialist with the skill set and everything, and knowing that the two library aides have been removed from the budget.
Yes.
But then I'm also hearing the literacy specialist and the services that are invaluable that they're providing, so, and I hate to do this to you and put you on the hot seat, but if you had to pick, I mean, I know you said that we don't have the media specialist yet.
Yes.
But if something had to go, are you and Nicole leaning any, ranking those in any particular order?
I think if you look at the tiers, obviously, we'd love to hang on to our literacy specialist. Our media specialist made it into the second tier as well. We would love it, but we understand that the position doesn't exist, and so it would have the least impact, it would have an impact, but it'd have the minimal impact on the middle schools.
Okay. Then you're leaving no one in the library.
No.
No.
There won't be anyone in the library in that, no, that's an issue.
Okay.
Any other questions for Principal Ry?
Well, the team.
Well, but that-
Safety obvious.
All right, if you want to go there.
I would like to know your opinion of the team and the cut, and whether we can really-
I think I can speak for all educators when class size is important, it definitely is. But with the data that's proposed, I have to support Superintendent Doyle's budget. And the Williams community is very supportive, and that speaks volumes to the tradition and to what is in place at Williams Middle School, and I think that's really important. We have fantastic teachers, they do an excellent job, and smaller class sizes, yes, would be beneficial, but we also have to look at the enrollment data as well.
But when we look at it, it appears, just quickly looking at the data we got tonight, that we could have classes there of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, somewhere in that range.
So, the, our next year's seventh grade class would be the big, right now, our current eighth grade class is of one hundred and forty students. The next class would be next year's seventh grade class at one hundred and twenty-four, twenty-five, and that's status quo. And that would be a big class, but the classes do seem to be trending towards leveling out around one hundred and ten students per class.
So what do you think of this idea that we're talking about now with the traveling team?
I, from what I understand, it has worked in the past. I don't know specifics as to how it was actually scheduled, that's something I have to work with Principal Allen and the assistant principals to really get a comprehensive understanding of exactly how this traveling team would work.
It worked well in the past, we do know that, the both staff and principals, former principals, report that it was very successful.
See, here's my question with using projected numbers. When I look at what was projected for our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in two thousand, I'm going back to two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. What was projected was seven hundred and eleven, what actually happened was seven hundred and twenty-two. Next year, what was projected was six seventy-three, what actually happened was six eighty-three. Twenty thirteen, fourteen was exactly right on. Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, what was projected was six sixty-two, but what actually happened was six hundred and ninety-four. What was projected for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen was six hundred and eighty-four, what actually happened was seven hundred and eleven kids at our middle school. Now, that, we don't know the breakout of Glenbrook versus Williams, but that's a lot of kids to have to add into a middle school with less teachers. If we're going by projections that seem to be lower than what our actual has, I mean, we learned that with redistricting and with kindergarten, I mean, our kindergarten projections were always off, our first grade projections were always off, and the, the housing market in Long Meadow isn't decreasing. Families are moving in here because the houses, they're kind of staying at a somewhat affordable rate for people with young kids to move in. And I think what we've seen over the last two years is a higher rate of kids coming into our district. I mean, if you look at what they projected in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, they projected two thousand five hundred and eighty-four kids in our district. What we actually had were two thousand seven hundred and sixteen kids in our district. That's a lot of kids to have to teach with cutting teachers. And so I'm just afraid to cut these, the team, right now, because adding two hundred thousand dollars in in two years is gonna be hard.
I think you're really on the cusp, because when you're looking at class sizes, that can go up to twenty-nine, thirty because of the math, and with the addition, you see the past two years where we had seven new students one year, eight new students another, you're on the cusp. It's not, it's not something that I'd recommend, but if you want to cut in the budget-
That's where you do it.
There was nothing left.
I mean, it looks like in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, if the projections are correct, then that would be the time when it starts to look like maybe we could do it fairly safely. Right now, it looks like we might be able to do it, but we might not be able to do it. And that's a risk, because we won't get the money again later.
Right.
I mean, it's one thing cutting one teacher at Blueberry or one at Center, but cutting four, when you have to add four back if you ever have a problem, that's a real issue.
And just to be fair, with the projected numbers that Tom has provided this evening, what he was doing was taking the current enrollment and just bumping it up a year.
Yeah, so I, I'm not saying it's-
Oh, these aren't NASDAQ numbers?
No, we are not using NASDAQ numbers, we are using October one data numbers.
Yeah, and I'm not faulting the data at all.
Right, Tom?
What I'm saying is, you can't predict what's gonna happen. I mean, it-
Just poke them.
It could be correct, it could be off. I mean, it's, and no fault of anyone's creativity.
So, for example, Kim, this-
I'm just trying to figure out-
No, 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 and I understand.
Because we've been off before, and I don't want to be off.
No, 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 so, this past fifteen, sixteen projected, two twenty-one for grade six, that was our actual enrollment of grade five in twenty fourteen, fifteen. So our October one numbers-
So how do I get the projection from NASDAQ?
NASDAQ doesn't break down- NASDAQ doesn't break down by...
School.
Or school.
Well, I'm not asking by school, I'm asking by grade.
We have the one from...
So that's the numbers that Chris Collins did give us last year.
Right, well, right, because when I look at Chris Collins' presentation from June, and I'm gonna look at the total, 2015, 2016 total was 712 for middle school. And on our enrollment projections, and Chris Collins said 700. But you go to 2016, 2017, we're the same, 670, 667. But then when you go up to 2017, 2018, our middle school enrollment projections are 657, and Chris's were 681. And you go to 2018, 2019, our projections are 625, and Chris's were 673. I'm not looking at the breakout at the schools, I'm just looking at the total number of middle school kids. And so when there's 50 kids discrepancy between a presentation that was given to us in June and a presentation that's being given to us now, I'm hesitant to cut the teachers.
Right, no, and I understand that. I think what, in the investigating, 'cause I know we've talked about how Chris got his numbers, and I know that they've tried contacting him and trying to establish where the numbers came from. I think, what did you say, the most...
No.
It was established from the NASDAQ 2014 report?
Well, it was a revised report that is dated December 7, 2014. I mean, I can give it to you. But again, every year that they give us their enrollment, the numbers change. So when I look at the one that they gave us dated 10, 14, 2015, their numbers now are different. So as, I think to Russ's point, I can give you all the data you want, but there's nothing that's gonna... Yeah, until we have kids here on the first day of school, and even that number changes, our October 1 number report, the numbers that we currently have, have changed since then. We have kids that enroll throughout the course of the year. I'll be happy to give you a copy of this to show you where he got his numbers from, in total. But this does not break it down by school.
Right.
NASDAQ also sends us that information, then every year we send it back, they update it again. We use NASDAQ for things like, if you're doing a building project or things like that, it's, it has not been accurate for the day-to-day or the year-to-year enrollment for us.
Well, I think we talked about that.
I mean, the only thing that really is clear in my mind is that it's unclear if we can do this and not have an enrollment or a class size problem. It's just not clear enough to me. You know, I mean, I'd have trouble voting for it, because I'm just not sure that we're not gonna have a problem next year.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have some high classes. It would be very good if you didn't have to do it.
Yeah.
All right, so, summary. What we're saying essentially is that we're supportive of the team, the traveling team.
I am.
That's, I mean, just to kind of move the conversation forward, and I only say that because the lights are gonna turn off in 35 minutes.
I know, LCTV shuts off at 11 o'clock, I noticed.
Oh, really?
Watching the select board meeting. Doesn't matter where you are, discussion, subsequent...
So, I mean, to kind of cut to the chase then.
Let's cut, sorry.
But the high school...
All right, so...
If we have to, the library aide...
So I totaled it up right here on an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
And so I went through in my mind and started pulling out the things I thought we could do without. And I accidentally, I accidentally...
Who asked you?
Hold on, it was, this was my own little calculation. And I accidentally just recreated Tier 3. Like, that's what I came up with. And so of the things that were, not comfortable, we're never comfortable, you know what I mean. We're never comfortable, of the things that we could propose eliminating, obviously, we don't want to, but the library aide is something that shows up in three different tiers. It's a consistent one, so there's $20,000. We also don't wanna talk about doing elementary health, but if we have to talk about it, we need to talk about this 24.
And again, that's in all three tiers.
And that's in all three tiers.
They haven't spoken about it yet.
So I'm just going through, so it's in all three tiers. I think consistently, it's been something that at least the admin team has identified as not ideal, but if we're gonna, it's not a classroom teacher.
We have now, so...
That's accurate.
So the other one, of course, is professional development, and the question is, do you cut 5,000 or 15,000? And if we cut 15,000, can't we just throw 15,000 added from unexpected funds or from school choice next year and make up the difference? And the answer's probably, yeah. We could probably fund it at a school choice and make up $15,000. I mean, of the things that we throw school choice money at, that's not a lot of money. And then you get to technology, and the question is, do you cut 5,000 or 1,000?
10,000?
10,000.
Five or 10?
Right. Sorry, sorry.
What did you do, split it down the middle and say 750 or 75?
No, I think I translated a number wrong.
I was, have you looked at all of our programs that we're paying for right now? Make sure people are actually using them?
Right.
Like the, I mean, I don't know what they're using in middle school, but I'm gonna say at the elementary level, iXL.
So speaking to iXL, when we initially subscribed to the program, not every teacher in every building and every grade was interested. When we got the cost per student, actually it was cheaper to get the license for all of the grades, for all of the students than it was to get it just for those students, for the classrooms, for the teachers that were interested. So, so we went and did get it for everybody. I can't say everybody's using it, definitely not to the same level. But from a cost perspective, it was cheaper for us to do that.
I have it for everyone.
Yes.
Well, and my question to follow up on that would be, with the new math program, I know any kind of supplementation that you do with, with any subject is nothing but beneficial. But is, and I don't even know how much we're paying for iXL, but since you brought that up as an example, is that cost worth the benefit for the ones who are using it?
Well, and iXL now has an English, an EL section?
Yeah, I think your principals will tell you that iXL is a great product, and many, many kids are using it.
Well, my kid that uses it loves it.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you're gonna get them, we both think a lot on that one. We're looking at iReady at middle school to cut a portion of iReady out and put more teaching back in the hands of the teacher as opposed to, it's a program similar to iXL where you kind of move along, but it's computer-based, so...
And what is that for? It's, is it math or is it?
It, it's literacy.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have one for math, too, actually.
And I'm assuming, Nick, that this is something that you look at and reevaluate with your team and, and the whole district. Come on up, so you can be on, you gotta be on microphone, sorry.
No, that's fine. Well, actually, maybe just going back a bit, since the technology department was brought up with the consolidation of the school and town IT. It has been tremendously beneficial for both the school and town and what I've seen so far, because it allows us to consolidate and reduce a lot of duplicated efforts and equipment. And part of the reason we're able to do that is because of the fiber network that was put in that my predecessor advocated so heavily for. That allows us to do things like consolidate on a single internet connection for the schools and towns. We're consolidated on a single firewall and a single web filter. So there's all these instances where the school would be buying, you know, services for multiple, the company, you know, multiple connections from the same company on both sides of the fence. They'd be duplicating hardware, but we're not doing that. And it allows us to provide a higher level of service. A lot of the costs under the software budget line are things that, they cost what they cost, and they're crucial to day-to-day business. They're things like the MUNIS financial system, they're things like the Power School Student Information System. Those are the big-ticket items. iXL, in the FY16 proposed budget was $7,000, but it sounds like that was more affordable to do across the board than it would have been to do it à la carte. I mean, when I look through the software budget lines, I'm familiar with all these products, because I've, in the past six months, had to support people using them or helped with, you know, troubleshooting issues or talked to people about training opportunities. It's all used very heavily, there's not a lot of fluff at all. And especially to talk about the hardware budget line, for example. The most recent budget on that was $101,000, as Tom said. That covered the Apple lease, there wasn't anything else. That covered the last payment on the Apple lease. And just to speak to how difficult that can make, you know, hardware purchasing and that kind of thing. We have a server infrastructure that runs all of the services that the school and town depend on. That's what MUNIS runs on, and it's what Power School runs on. When you put that in place, you plan utilization of it so that in the event that a single component could fail, business operations wouldn't be disrupted. Recently, we were looking at it, and we found that with our current utilization rate, we had passed that point of redundancy. We were at a point where if any single component failed in that server, it would go down completely. And that would have an immediate impact on the schools and towns. Internet access would stop working, email wouldn't be accessible, printers wouldn't work, MUNIS wouldn't work, Power School wouldn't work. So we got the vendor on the phone, we made some configuration changes that brought us below that threshold, so we now have a little bit of wiggle room. But we're really right at the cusp of needing to look at additional equipment. And with a budget line of $100,000 for hardware, once we renew our Apple lease, there's nowhere to put it. So, I mean, we have equipment out there from the previous Apple lease. $100,000 is just enough to talk about renewing the Apple lease and not even replacing all the equipment that, some of it we've had for five years now. So it is pretty tight. But if you have any specific questions about certain software items, I'd be happy to talk about them.
So with the, I'll start. So with the cuts, Nick, that are being proposed of the, either the 10,000 or the 5,000?
He wants the five, if he has to have one.
I liked it when you said one, but they cut that pretty quickly.
Wouldn't all of them?
Yeah.
But, but in reality, what is that affecting? What do you see that affecting?
When we said tech support, software, and repairs, the only place that we identified that we could cut that wouldn't have a tremendous impact on service reliability would have been holding teachers accountable, for example, for more of the repair costs in the event of damaged equipment. All the staff are issued mobile devices. In the event that they're damaged, we hold them accountable for a portion of their repair costs. It would, and it would mean we might have to hold them accountable for all of the repair costs.
Yeah, but we can't just do that without, I mean, we'd have to negotiate with the teachers to do that.
No, it was understood that's signed.
We have them signed in agreement, yeah.
But we've been more lenient on...
Oh, so it says on it now that they could pay up to 100% or whatever?
Well, in the existing usage agreement, I believe it says something to the effect of, "You may be held accountable for the repair and replacement cost of damaged equipment." The reality is, when repair comes in, we've put kind of a cap on what we hold them responsible for, and as a courtesy, we've been paying for the rest. That's not a huge portion of the repair budget line, but it is an area that we could potentially have some savings. But that was the only thing that we were able to identify.
So how do we get to 10, then?
We were perhaps planning on switching to a different platform for our virtualization environment. That would allow us to consolidate. Right now, we have support arrangements with VMware and Nutanix for the software and the hardware component of our server infrastructure. We thought we'd be able to combine that infrastructure with the Nutanix vendor by changing the software, but we found that that would result in increased hardware requirements, so it wasn't as simple as that. So we, the repair costs for staff machines would, if we held them accountable for the full repair cost for machines, that probably would account to the $10,000. And then $5,000 would be holding them still accountable for a portion of the repair costs.
Yeah, we have $22,000 for repair, maintenance, and computer equipment.
Right, but that's not always, you know, damaged equipment, where that staff, you know, that's not always staff-damaged equipment. That might be hard drive replacements on a server or failed components that we need to replace and infrastructure equipment. Or projector repair or those kind of things.
Any other questions for Nick?
So happy he knows about this stuff, 'cause I've got no idea.
Well, I don't mean, I hope I, if any of it was unclear, that's not my intent, so I wanna explain it, so it's...
That was great.
You're good, Nick.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for our elementary principals, and then we can let them all go? 'Cause I know they're so excited to still be here after a long day.
We don't wanna do it, but if we have to, help, okay.
I just wanna speak for the importance of it. I wish that it was something that we would not consider cutting.
Right.
The committee was very gung-ho, this is important. The parent survey indicated a great need for it, but again, it's something that we don't have. But I would be supportive of keeping it.
And I know other school districts do have it.
Yeah, I had it when I was here in 4th grade.
Well, I mean, when I talk to parents in eastern Massachusetts, and my kids, our kids are the same age, and they're, they have a time during their school day that they have a health curriculum.
Well, I guess the question that I would have, and it's really more of like a question that's gonna, I mean, I kinda already know the answer to it. But is there a way to supplement in the regular classroom curriculum, some, not, not everything, but some of the things that I think are important to speak to kids about? Outside of like the...
Well, you have so much going on with math and literacy, we couldn't ask that about teachers.
That's why, I kinda already knew the answer to that question.
We went through those scenarios on the health committee, we, you know, we tried every which way.
Yeah.
And the PE teachers aren't certified to take that.
Correct.
Right.
And they're barely covering their own curriculum.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess my question was more focused on like, can we utilize like a regular education or like a, you know, an ELA session to not only talk about the material that we're covering, but also kind of say smoking's bad? And, you know, like...
Oh, you, you kind of...
Some of that gets picked, addressed in the primary classes, by matter of fact, yeah.
Kind of how science has kind of worked its way into technology a little bit, and...
Yeah, exactly, like, just is there sort of like a fusion where we can not cover everything we wanted to cover, but address some of the, you know, the social, emotional issues that I guess the health class would talk about? But obviously, that's a longer conversation, and the simple answer's not yes or no.
So do we generally agree with Michael about the Tier 3?
I mean, if anything, we can go up 10,000. If we, if we...
10 or 5?
If we go with the 15,000 for professional development instead of the 5,000, we end up with 71,000. And if you decide that you wanna do the 10, so we can go up 15,000 essentially, in terms of what we could...
Get back.
Well, then...
What we could reduce from my budget, if you wanna include that additional 5,000 from Nick's budget, which I know probably we don't.
May I send the principals home?
Yes, please.
Principals, good night, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Nick, you're good, thank you.
Tom, you're sleeping in your office, right?
So... Just be happy, you don't have to necess, are they coming back tomorrow? Or they're not required to? No, good. Not that I don't wanna see you all, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that's 76 grand, 77, basically.
I'm looking at 71, so we're looking at 70, yeah, 7, I mean, um...
77, most.
If we do 10,000...
I don't see, though, how, after listening to Nick speak, I don't see how we can bump him from, bump him to the full max of 10. Just like I don't see how we can bump PD to the full max.
So we're either looking at 71 or 76. We're looking at either 71 or 76, depending on if you wanna go to the max, so...
So what are you, what are you gonna put back if you put that amount back in? You're asking us to take more, a larger portion, yes, but what are you gonna reinstate?
So what are you gonna put that 71,000 toward?
Right, what's it going towards?
So then you, right, so, well, no, I think it goes back towards the middle schools, right? Which aren't currently in that, which are not in this Tier 3 number.
Yeah, you're gonna go back to the reductions due to enrollment.
Right, so then, okay, so...
So then you're taking the 219 for the travel team minus 7, 71? I mean, 71,000.
Wouldn't it just be taking the general fund increase of 983 and adding 200,000 to it?
You're adding 219, and then you're equal...
Tom, is that what it is? If I'm taking the FY17 revised budget slide, and I have a general fund increase of 983,000?
What are you talking about?
No, I don't.
The last blue slide.
We need numbers next time.
Oh, you... The last blue slide.
We are numbers, I see 10,000.
Right, but that number includes free full-day kindergarten.
Yes. Well, so then we can reduce 70,000 from it, right? So then we're only asking for 900 and...
13.
13,976.
Well, why are you starting with 1,085? Which is...
Nope, 983. And then I'm gonna reduce the...
Now, wait, that's assuming the 102 reduction.
I was gonna ask you, does that include...
That's not assuming the 102 offset?
Not, not in here.
Okay, so work off of this number for a second. 983 minus the 70 we just talked about...
Right.
Is 913, and I'm leaving off the change, which is almost a million dollars, sorry. And then reduce the 102?
No, I'm sorry, it does include it.
It does include it, okay, so do not reduce the 102.
Which is why it's in blue, 'cause we changed it...
Right, that's what I thought.
From the initial presentation last week.
So now we're gonna add in 200,000, because we want that middle school team, right?
Right.
So that brings us to 1.1...
We subtracted 71,000?
I just subtracted 70.
70,000, okay.
All right, so can you walk me back through that?
And now you're adding in 200 for the middle school team.
983 minus 70.
So 1.13976.
Yep, which is 2, 300,000 more than what we originally, what we're gonna get from them.
Right, I'm gonna go through that again, so it's 93, 976.
So nine.
I just wanna figure out your logic.
So 983 was, we're, we, our FY17 revised budget is a general fund increase of 983, 976,000. That includes.
102.
Free full day.
Universal full day kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
It also includes $100,000, $102,000 reduction from the general fund offsets that were just proposed this week.
Mm-hmm.
But it does not include our middle school teachers, right?
Well, okay, so then you're up to.
1,022,000.
We're up to 1.2, 1.2 million.
So then I reduce the 70,000.
113.
1113976.
All right, so it's, so it's 983, and then we're subtracting, oh, and then we're subtracting the 70,000.
I subtracted just 70,000, we just talked about.
So, and then, okay, then.
And then you added back in 200 for the middle school.
Yep.
Which brought us to 1.113976.
Mm-hmm.
And then you subtract the 808, 832.
Right, good.
Which is?
We're asking for 305,144,000 to be level service, but the addition of a universal full day kindergarten.
But now, and that's assuming that we're doing the one-time funding cuts.
Close?
Close, I mean, you're not level service, 'cause you are making other cuts.
Okay.
Right.
You know, you are cutting the enrollment, the position at Blueberry, you're cutting some of these other, you know, tech and PD and so on, but.
That's true.
Yes, it's, it's, it's an attempt to be compromised.
And that's including the 102 offset.
That we've already, the natural gas reduction, circuit breaker, building rental preschool fund.
And what was your final number?
305144 is what we.
I'm off by 20,000, so I'm missing something.
I had 323.
I got 323674. Yes, 219519.
Well, no, but minus 24,000, because if you.
For the language teacher.
Yeah, you don't hire the language teacher they were gonna hire.
Oh.
So we're just rounding it to 200.
And the language teacher cost how much?
24.
To, even, roughly?
No, not even, but I will put exact numbers to this, 'cause you're gonna have to vote an exact number tomorrow, so.
Oh, Tom, I know.
So.
Um, okay, so minus 24, so then you said minus 24,000, roughly?
If you're adding 219, then you're minusing 24,000.
193, I think, is the number, but.
I got, so I got 299674. Okay, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop.
Kim is in the ballpark, again, because she's, she rounded some numbers.
All right, so basically, what we're saying at this point, to do everything that we wanna do, we need to find $300,000.
We need to request.
Well, we, we need to find it in terms of, we needed funded.
Entire town.
We need the allocation, an additional allocation of $300,000.
Ish.
Ish, so where does that bring their total, the total general government deficit to?
600.
Well, it's close, because their number included are 277, so if you're only adding, say, 25, you're up to about 560 as a total deficit.
Yeah, they were at 534, so we're adding.
But when they, when we talked about the 102, it was at a 534 number. So now we're adding, we took the 102, but we also added 200,000 into it, so, so the 102 was part of trying to get the 534 number down. We're using the 102 and we're still at 530 plus. We're, we're adding to the deficit, so we don't have anything more to give them.
Can I ask you, last year.
For lack of a better way of explaining it.
Last year, we went into, um, we were in this same situation, or same, we were having these same conversations with the town, and they were telling us we were gonna be at a deficit as well. But we went into town meeting.
We went into town meeting with a balanced budget last year.
No, we, we, they started off last year telling us, we have 300, and we pushed back, and we ended up getting.
And we got a 700 and whatever.
But they, they agreed to that before we got to town meeting.
Right. We presented a unified balanced budget to the town floor last year. See, and, and I know it's not but our problem to worry about where the town is gonna come up with the money from, but my fear is, we're going to propose this budget expecting the 300-ish, and at town meeting, if we are not appropriated the 300-ish, then we're going to be right back here needing to make 300-ish in cuts.
So we basically need to come up with a planning scenario where we can identify, like, what is, like, yes, we want free full day kindergarten, we wanna keep our middle schools the way they are, we're comfortable, not comfortable, but we're okay, looking at these offsets and taking additional reductions. So let's say that we end up in a scenario where tier three is the most likely thing to be funded, and let's just, you know, then really the difference that we're trying to make up at that point.
Is free full day kindergarten.
Is free full day kindergarten, and we're only looking for an additional 179,000, right?
But the four teachers aren't on tier three.
Well, no, it's either, really what it comes down to.
My number's adding teachers back in and reduce an additional 10,000 from the tier three number.
If, if we don't get the 300, I think it's basically either we don't do kindergarten or we don't do Williams.
And I think at that point.
And something else, actually.
Right, and then the question is, in the short term, what's more detrimental? And in the short term, the answer to, of course, is higher class size. In the long term, the, what's more detrimental is probably kindergarten. But you could also argue that in the long term, cutting the higher class size is detrimental, so.
As a level one school, so.
Right.
You have to think about all of the things that.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but that's.
That factor into it, and.
You know, and I have no problem with, you know, like, we've all been talking about of saying, okay, uh, town budget, we want the 1.113976 or whatever-ish that number comes to. Um, but I can say, and, and Tom and Marie, you can disagree with me if, if you think I'm wrong, I, I'm not seeing.
There's no good way out.
I'm not seeing a whole lot of give on the town side, if I had to predict.
But here's the thing, when there's no, when we look at those historical numbers of what they've actually given us over the last five years and the percentages, when you don't give to the schools for, I mean, I think you said this, when you don't give for a number of years, then at one point you have to, or we collapse, and.
I, I don't disagree with you at all.
And there was a million dollar plus, the, um, it was 2011, the, the, um, a monk into the school system was over a million dollars, because it happens. Every four, even when you keep a road in the base, then every five or six years, you have to come up with a big number to bring the base back up, and we're at that point again.
Was that that override?
No, I think part of that was technology consolidation and moving the tax general fund from the town's budget to our budget was part of that increase, so.
In the first year of our salary, after zero.
Well, the problem is, we can't just go with what the town gave us, because it means we cut.
No, and I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that that's what I wanna do, I just.
No, no, I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying it's not as simple as, so, I agree the town probably won't agree with this, and I don't think we can take what they're offering. So unless we can get somewhere in the middle of those two numbers, it's just where it's stalemate, because we can't take 808, because we have to cut Williams, Center, Blueberry, you know, we're cutting a lot of staff.
Right.
And I don't, I can't in good conscience say, well, that's okay, even though we're saving more on the town side.
Well, that's the thing, we're asking for three, we would be asking for roughly 300 and something thousand, 305,000 dollars, a hundred of which would likely come back in the following year in chapter 70 funded, so we're really asking for 205, which, when you look at those, um, three things that you mentioned before, 147,000 in increased capital, 122,000 in OPEB increase, and 110,000 in the levy cap, those are things that they don't have to do.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
It won't affect.
But they, but they also have their 300 and whatever, what was their deficit again? I forgot their number.
500.
534 was with our.
Yeah, that included.
But that's including kindergarten and this additional savings. I mean, if you take out kindergarten and that, they're, they're in the plus.
Right, and, and they were willing to be talking if we were offsetting that 100, that 102, when the number was 534, like Tom was saying. Now that we've added 200 back in and made that number larger to start with.
But we've also decreased another 70,000 from our budget.
True.
The problem is, what we added back in is what we already have. I mean, that's the issue, really, at the end of the day.
Right.
We should be working from level services, not 808. That's the biggest problem we have right now, is 808 is not going to keep our budget, or keep our staffing the way it is.
No, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. So, Tom?
Yes.
Since it's like two minutes to 11, um, will you retype all of this up now?
By 11:00?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to have it emailed by 11:02. No, I'm just kidding. But could you send?
So when you get in at 7:00 tomorrow, you know, in eight hours?
But no, I mean, would you recap what we've discussed to this point? Because I think what I'm hearing from everybody is that you're all comfortable at this point of acknowledging we don't have level funding, we've found a little bit more cuts that we're willing to make, and we're willing to go to the town of a budget more than what's been appropriated with the difference being what we talked about. So if you put all of that together so that we can finish that discussion tomorrow and vote on it, is that fair?
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, we need to, we need to make like a, a value statement, and we need to be able to go back to our constituents and say, we're working our hardest to make sure that every child has the resources they need, and that, you know, we're not limiting the, the ability of our middle school students to enjoy smaller class sizes, and we're gonna try our hardest to make sure that kids can go to school for free in kindergarten. I think we have to be honest with ourselves and say that that may not be a reality that we can, because of the political nature of the fact of our budget process, that may not be a reality. And we may be in a position where that's not something we can fund, even if we've included in our budget.
Right.
So we need to be very good in how we communicate whatever we're going to do tomorrow. And we need to be able to, as a board, stick, come up with a message and stick to it about what we're looking to do, and we need to be ready to go to town meeting and try to get our budget amended and succeed. But we also need to be ready if that doesn't happen.
We don't need our budget amended, we need it.
Well, we need our budget funded, sorry.
Our budget funded, right, because whatever we vote on is what they have to, is what they have to present.
So.
So with that, can we agree to continue this discussion tomorrow?
Yes, I move to recess until tomorrow.
No.
We have to do one.
Oh, wait, no, that's right, we have one more item of business, hold, hold, please.
Did somebody look at these? I didn't.
I did, I checked them.
I were recessed, right?
I didn't know they were here.
Until tomorrow.
I did them on the snow day.
She was here.
I was here having the meetings, so would you mind?
Thank you, Diane.
Both of them?
Yes.
Both of them, you need, here's the, the thingy.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch FY16 fund dated February 12th in the amount of $727.87.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Shannon, I'm still on the phone.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, I'm, I'm so sorry, Michelle, you're right. With this being remote participation, we need a roll call vote. No, no, no.
Okay, Liz?
Michael Clark, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye. Kim King, aye.
Russell Dupre, aye.
Go for it. All right. Um, I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 3091.
Yes.
Of the general fund FY16 fund, FY16 general fund dated February 12, 2016, in the amount of 321,331.66, sorry, I just said it wrong.
Dollars and 66 cents.
321, 331 dot 66.
Second.